Vice Chair Steven, can you hear me?
If anyone is here to speak at citizens time, please come up front and sign at the sign in sheet. Thank you.
Hang on, I'm sorry, where?
On the bottom right corner of your PC, you know, where your audio settings are.
Uh huh.
Bottom right.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, the other right.
It should be like headset.
And I wonder if that had anything to do because I had it muted.
That probably was why.
Yeah. Okay, let me see. Let me text her again. Okay, let me, um, let me call you back if I run into anything.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, thanks Logan, bye.
So we changed the color to yellow to make it more. And for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mrs. Garza, would you please call the roll?
Yes ma'am. Chair Seberg.
Here.
Vice Chair Stevens. Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Hollingsworth.
Here.
Mrs. Brooks.
Here.
Mrs. Spall.
Here.
And Mrs. Bressia.
Here.
Thank you, can I get a motion for electronic participation?
Chair.
In this meeting?
I'd like to move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve Vice Chair Lisa Stevens to participate remotely.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Spall, seconded by Mrs. Brooks of the school board, the city of Manassas approve Vice Chair Stevens to participate remotely. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion carries six zero. Mrs. Stevens will join us online. Dr. Newman, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight?
No ma'am.
Thank you, can I get a motion for the public meeting agenda?
Chair, I move to that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Brooks, seconded by Mr. Hollingsworth, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mrs. Stevens, did you have a vote on that?
Aye.
Seven zero, thank you. Next is superintendent's announcements and spotlights, we don't have any spotlights tonight, but Dr. Newman, did you want to say anything tonight?
Just that we're all in t-shirts today because we had our convocation, these were our convocation shirts. It was a very successful kickoff to the start of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Thank you sir. Alright, next up is board committee reports, I will call upon Mrs. Brooks for the policy committee report.
Thank you Chair. The policy committers, policy committee meeting on July twenty-seventh at nine thirty. The members present were Lisa Stevens as chair, myself Christina Brooks and Jill Spall participated virtually. Dr. Newman, Mr. Giffeller and Dr. Casada were also present and members of the committee. Silent observers present Suzanne Seberg, Robin Williams, Sarah Bressia and one member of the public. The committee met to discuss two proposals made by school board member Sarah Bressia. The first proposal was to create a special grading policy committee to look into and investigate the current MCPS grading policy. The second policy was to amend the current grading policy, IGR, to add specific deadlines and penalties to work submitted beyond the teacher determined deadlines. Ms. Bressia's presentation along with her emailed notes were made available to the school board as a whole and the superintendent's cabinet prior to the committee meeting. Chair Stevens shared Ms. Bressia's PowerPoint during the meeting. Prior to sharing discussing the PowerPoint, Chair Stevens addressed issues brought to her attention by Dr. Newman and Mr. Giffeller in relation to three other pieces of the current grading policy, the pass fail option for some classes, calculation of final grades and grade weighting. Mr. Giffeller and Dr. Casada will be looking into how to adjust or amend these three components to best support student learning and achievement. If these three pieces of the grading policy do need to be changed or updated, it will be for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. During discussion of Bressia's proposal, several questions came up. There were concerns voiced as to whether or not any grading policy changes would impact on-time graduation rates, whether teachers might use the proposed amended grading policy in a punitive or flexible manner, and how the burden of the calculation of penalties could impact teacher workload. The committee voiced additional concerns that there had not, has not been time to collect data regarding the efficacy of the current grading policy versus the previous grading policy. Whether the timeline to amend the policy would be too close to the start of the school year, whether it would add additional burdens to teachers and staff to change the grade books in Power School, and would any amendment potentially require teachers to change their grade books after the start of the school year. The policy committee tasked both Mr. Giffeller and Dr. Casada with gathering preliminary data including grade distributions within and across departments, comparisons between grades and standardized assessment performance, and grades versus on-time graduation rates. Dr. Casada shared that once school year starts, she will be able to take a deeper dive into Power School, the grading platform used by MCPS, to identify and gather additional data which could shed light onto the efficacy of current grading policy, I hate the word. She along with Mr. Giffeller will be able to share data gathered with the full board sometime in October. The committee will also, also agree that it would like to see the data PWCS will collect from their own grading policy audit which is currently underway. The policy committee anonymously made three recommendations in relation to Ms. Bressia's proposals. The first is to hold off on the discussion of creating a special grading policy until the end of the first semester. The second is to take the question of whether or not to create a special grading policy committee to the full board for a vote at the end of the first semester. The third and final recommendation is to also hold off on making any amendments to the grading policy at this time. The committee felt that there is not enough objective measurable data to support the amendment to the grading policy at this time. The committee agreed that making decisions in haste without all available data creates a potential negative impact to student academic performance and on-time graduation rates.
Thank you. Thank you for that report. Next up will be citizens comments, if there's anybody that would like to speak, please come up and sign in. At this time, we welcome citizens who wish to speak about services, policies and affairs of the city of Manassas Public Schools. Because we have an agenda we need to complete, we ask that comments be limited to three minutes. We appreciate the time you have taken to be here, we treat citizens comments as a public hearing, we do not engage in conversation with speakers. The lack of an immediate response to your comments should not be taken as a lack of interest or concern. Please be respectful when presenting your comments. And up first I have Janet Graham, Janet Graham is first on the list. Is her mic on? Hold on a second, hold on.
Can you hear me now? Yeah, okay, good. I'm Janet Graham, I live at nine two oh three Battle Street. I'm a retiree from Manassas City Schools, I was in math and sciences. And currently what I do is I tutor, I tutor for free and I tutor on demand this year and from city of Manassas. I had eighteen ongoing students and this might be some, a small sampling, eighteen is not many students, but I think it's fairly representative of our population. Of the eighteen, I had three Islamic Asians, I had seven Hispanics, I had three black, I had three white, I had one Asian and one Eastern European. Fairly representative, I think, of our schools. To a man, every time I get contacted, it's right after the first report card. Parents are panicked and they say, I had no idea my child was doing so poorly. I had no idea, I looked at the grades, the grades were muddled, I couldn't figure it out. I didn't have, until the very last day, my child had no deadlines and when my child finally turned in all his math assignments, he failed. And then my phone starts to ring, I won't have any students until first report card this year, I'm sure I won't, until the first report card hits and then parents are calling and they're saying, I don't even know what happened here. I think having no deadline is very detrimental to their understanding, especially in math. And I have students who, in my highest perform, I do seventh grade through calculus, whatever the need is. My highest functioning students have figured out that they don't need to take, they don't need to understand the information when the test is given. So what they do is they wait until the very last day and then they bring me all their tests and all their, their study guides and they say, teach me everything right now. This lack of ongoing understanding in math is really detrimental, I really think we need to have deadlines. And I really think we need to have a grading policy that reflects effort. Some of my students that went on to the governor's school on the first day were shocked because they didn't feel like doing their homework for the governor's school and George Mason didn't give them a fifty. What are we teaching children? I, I, these are life skills and I really think that it's detrimental in the long run for children not to have higher expectations. Thank you.
Thank you Mrs. Graham. Next up is Dana Only.
Hello everyone, my name is Dana Only, I'm a former teacher in Manassas City, my husband is a current teacher in Manassas City, he's also the varsity soccer coach Brandon Calandra, you may know him. And we live at ten five oh four Manor View Place. I wanted to speak to the grading policy and the standard of excellence that I think it, it misses. The current grading policy, I believe misses out on some key things that we should be teaching students, their life skills that they would need and work as a parent, time management, getting things done when you're supposed to get them done. This kind of speaks also to Janet's point, you can't wait to the last minute to get something done. Work ethic, doing what you need to do even though you don't have to. You might be passing the class, that doesn't mean you shouldn't do an assignment that your teacher is, has assigned, I don't know what that's really teaching anyone, that you don't have to, to do something that you're asked to do. Accountability, accepting what you've earned, that it's not just about a pass or a fail, it's about earning whatever your best is. Problem solving, who can help me, I'm struggling, where can I go to get that help? And then showing up, whether that's as a parent or at your job or at school, we all need to show up, they need to show up. It's just a part of what they, they need to do. And I think that the current grading system is missing that because they don't really have to do any of these things. They don't have to do anything at a certain time, they don't have to work very hard, they can do ten, twenty or thirty percent of the work and still pass the class. They're not accountable for anything, there's no consequence for not doing what you need to do. They don't have to solve problems, work with their friends, work with their teachers, ask for outside help. And they don't have to show up. They can do it, turn it in and, and it doesn't matter. I want to speak a little bit on behalf of my husband, Brandon Calandra. He does have a standard on his soccer team, he does expect them to go to school. He expects them to have good attendance, he expects them to pass all of their classes. He expects them to show up to practice every day. And if they don't and they're not on time, if they don't have a strong work ethic, if they're not figuring out how to balance school and work and solve that problem, if they're not asking him for help or support when he needs it, they don't play in the game. And he has had that standard all along and look how far that soccer team has gone. And just imagine if we could apply some of that to what we expect of students in the classroom, how much further they could go. I was speaking with Sarah's husband just a few minutes ago and he shared with me that a high school teacher said a student wasn't coming to class. He called Brandon because he was on the soccer team, Brandon said, I'll take care of that and that student started going to class every single day. And that is data I think you could probably pull is the soccer players, look at their attendance prior to the soccer season and during the soccer season and I think you would see a really big difference. Thank you.
Ryan Steinbeck, Steinbach and on deck is Sebastian Steinbach.
Hello and thank you for this time, Ryan Steinbach, ten thousand twenty Willow Grove Trail. Good evening, I would also like to address the no zero policy. I was unable to find any research or outcomes that support this policy. So I'm glad to hear that you're looking for evidence basis on change since it doesn't appear it happened before. I found plenty of literature and one study against this with outcomes recorded. In my reading, I could see though that the idea behind the policy is to be less punitive and to keep kids from quitting on their studies. That is an admirable goal that I will support. But it's not effective under this, under this no zero policy. Logic should bear this out, none of you would pay a contractor fifty percent if they never showed up, never placed a single tile or ran a single wire. It is not tolerated in life, it should not be taught in school. Our traditional grading system rewards work ethic and excellence. Not coincidentally, our society does as well. If we are really wanting to meet our kids where they are and prepare them for the world as it will be, then their education must instill work ethic, pride in achievement, continual progression. Chair Seberg, your son and mine graduated with honors from the Innovation School at George Mason last year. I refuse to believe that you practice in your home what you preach from that chair. We both know that nurturing our children requires continually challenging them to achieve more than they realize that they can. That's what we do for the kids that we love most. We did, we did not lower our expectations because their brains are still developing. We stepped in and provided guidance to those precious developing brains, pointing them to the areas of interest and challenging them to take on leadership roles as they learned. Children need mentoring, not lax grading systems and zero accountability. We have more than a dozen guidance staff and counselors on hand to provide that, we have family liaisons too, this is in our structure. I may have never used Chaucer or the history of Roman Empire in my day-to-day work, but the time management, the work ethic and the analytical skills I developed while trying to keep my grades up on those subjects are the true skills that my developing brain needed to learn then and I use now. Thank God my teachers and my administration challenged me to do better when I first turned in subpar work as, as a freshman and they, they didn't tell me that was alright, they challenged me to do more because they saw more. We are on a provisional accreditation, we can blame COVID, but that was a universal experience to school systems in the US. Provisional accreditation was not. I volunteer at this high school and I have seen kids come in with low expectations but learn what they can do and start excelling. They just need someone to show them, to challenge them. And yes, they need consequences when they underperform or outright fail because they need to understand it hurts the team and their own reputation. I benched my own daughter from going to events when she did not elevate her efforts, she didn't quit, she tried harder. There are kids with hard lives out there, I'm not deaf to that or too far removed from my own poor rural upbringing in Morris Illinois to know this. But we can do better, it's about personal investment, not lax grading.
Sebastian Steinbach.
Good evening, my name is Sebastian Steinbach and I live at one zero zero two zero Willow Grove Trail. Throughout my four years at Osborne, I was told by all of the faculty that MCPS students should always strive for excellence and that our school's mascot should be an inspiration to soar ever higher. While I'm not a biologist, I know for a fact that how high an eagle can go doesn't depend on how high its takeoff point is. The fifty percent grade floor is allowing students to pass through classes and graduate without any effort. I took a cybersecurity course my senior year and throughout that entire year, these students were actively disrupting the class and holding back those that wanted to learn. They were doing this because they refused to do the homework until the week of grades being due for the teacher. This prevented us from diving deeper into a lot of different subjects throughout the year and it was really frustrating to the teacher because she couldn't effectively do her job. I experienced the exact opposite method in my time at the governor's school at Innovation Park. I got into the governor's school program a year late and I didn't take the proper training courses like my fellow students did. However, instead of raising the grade floor to ensure that I passed and didn't feel like a failure, the teachers worked alongside of me outside of the class. I attended so many office hours with my professors and I went through things like Khan Academy and I excel with my professors by my side to ensure that I understood the material and could come into class prepared for the lesson. The point is that preventing students from failing, it doesn't them, it doesn't encourage them to do better. Failure is one of the best teachers for a reason and having teachers work with students through their academic failures allows them to actually soar and thrive for excellence. Thank you for your time.
Julie Steinbach.
Alright, good evening. So I'm gonna be a little slow in speaking because I suffered a concussion last night. But this was very, very important to me, to our family, a very important subject. I'm coming to you obviously as a parent, but one who doesn't agree with the current grading policy. As a parent and a child of an immigrant whose mother had to work hard and succeed and nothing handed to her, I believe this policy fosters laziness. Why would students care to work harder if they can pass with the bare minimum? For the last year, I have heard teachers at Osborne speak to us against the fifty percent. And what it's teaching students, I've also heard from people at governor's school, George Mason University and Northern Virginia Community College. To have professors from two colleges here in Nova speak against the policy and how they have to tell our students that academic matters or academics matter speaks volumes against what we are teaching our students here in our schools. You may think this policy is compassionate towards the student, but there is nothing compassionate about setting up our students for failure and that is all.
Ben Walters.
Good, good evening school board. I come before you today not only as a parent, but also as someone who envisions. I come before you today not only as a parent, but also as someone who envisions a bright future for our students. I believe that the current grading policy, while well-intentioned, is misguided and sets our students on a path that doesn't fully prepare them for the challenges ahead. By removing due dates, we're robbing our students of the invaluable skill of managing their time effectively, a skill that will prove crucial when they're juggling multiple classes in college, internships, and then eventually responsibilities in the workplace. Let's talk about retakes. Consider a world where unlimited retakes are the norm. Picture a new employee submitting a subpar project and asking for a redo. In the professional arena, the stakes are higher than they are in high school. The ability to get it done right the first time is highly valued. By promoting unlimited retakes, we are inadvertently discouraging our students from striving for excellence from the get-go. Then there's the grading scale. Again, it's well-intentioned, but here's the thing. Nothing in life has a 50% starting point, as some others have mentioned. When our students enter the real world, they'll quickly realize that half effort won't cut it. They'll need to aim higher, stretch their limits, and put their best foot forward. I genuinely appreciate the intent to create an inclusive and supportive environment. However, as we shape this policy, let's also consider the implications for our students beyond high school. Let's ensure that we equip them with the tools they'll need to thrive in college and in their future careers and workplaces. Finally, I urge you to just consider the value of giving teachers real autonomy, not only on grading, but also on setting deadlines and assessing penalties for late work. These practices mirror the expectations our students will face in college and in their professional lives, ultimately equipping them with the skills necessary to succeed. Thank you for your consideration, and thank you for the time.
Sarah Solano.
Hi, my name's Sarah, and I do have concerns with the grading policy. It's not teaching our children to be productive, which is a huge part of responsibility for the real world. It's overwhelming for the teachers at the end of each quarter, and it's challenging for the teachers and parents to communicate in a timely manner. If a student has been struggling since the beginning of the quarter, neither of the adult parties would have known until the curriculum has moved on into a deeper portion. So you're trying to play catch-up and teach them the new material. It's just too much and a little overwhelming for the students. And I grew up with a similar policy in my schools and witnessed firsthand these challenges. Luckily, my parents were very strict. They made sure we did work as soon as it was given to us. But not everybody has that at home. Some of these students have parents that don't get home right when they do. They might get home after they go to sleep. We have an opportunity here to help our students, teach them responsibility. Having taught at Loudoun County Public Schools, I understand that knowing of students needing help in a timely manner, it allows for better understanding of the material and ultimately a stronger graduating class. Thank you.
Robert Westover.
Hi, I'm Robert Westover. I live at 9250 Bennett Drive. I don't have any children. I'm not a teacher. But when I found out about this grading system, I was horrified. I couldn't believe it. I thought, "Whoa, did I hear that right?" This is autobiographical, guys, okay? I was a kid with a learning disability, a pretty severe one. And it was only discovered during a spelling bee when I could not spell to save my life. It was the first indication something was wrong, okay? And I had to go into remedial reading classes. A lot of things had to happen because very early on it was identified that I had what we call dyslexia or ADD, however you want to call it, okay? And you know what? I'm still a really crappy speller, but what I learned was that I was good at other things. And it was remedial reading I was put into where it was discovered that I had amazing reading comprehension abilities. And that reading comprehension, that knowledge to be able to remember what I read, has propelled me into a career, well, I'm not trying to brag, I just want you to know, where I have been quoted by the New York Times, been published in the New York Times, have been on ABC World News Tonight by request of Peter Jennings for an organization. I started to save a great historic site. So that could have only happened if I had identified and was identified at a very young age that I had problems, and I was never going to be this particular student that learned this particular way. But I can guarantee you guys right now, this system, where you just let them go through, is the worst thing you can do for them. I don't think you need to wait for the data, okay? I think if a house is burning down, you don't wait to see how much damage is done to it, okay? You put out the fire. I say put those kids back where they can learn their weaknesses and their strengths. And they will blossom. They will go forward and do amazing things for their communities, maybe even for the country. But it won't happen if this type of system, this fragmentary educational system, through this type examination, it is fragmentary, it is not a whole way to teach kids. So I'm just speaking from my heart because I'm so horrified by what I heard. I hope the wisdom up here, the collective wisdom up here, you guys get it, you understand it, move forward with a new and proper system where it isn't, everyone passes. Let those kids learn about their failures. Let them learn where their strengths are as well. Thank you.
Josh Askew.
Superintendent Newman, members of the School Board, thank you for giving the opportunity to speak. My name is Josh Askew. My son is a student at Metz, currently the Secretary of the Gifted and Talented Advisory Council, a member of the Metz PTA, and a former member of the Hayden PTA. Additionally, I have a background in structural design with a master's from George Mason. In preparation of tonight's discussion, I did a literature review of the grading policies being discussed. The literature clearly lacks empirical evidence for or against these policies. However, in the past few years, several dissertations have been written about the impact of these policies. This is a good indicator that peer-reviewed journal articles will likely start covering the impact as well. In reading the literature, it becomes clear the reason for these changes in the broader education system are more focused on philosophy, that grades should be purely a measure of academic performance and not a blended measure of academic performance and behavior. This brings me to my concerns. If assessments of behavior are removed from the grading system, how does the school intend to assess student behavior? This is an important aspect of preparation for the adult world. Also, were the teachers surveyed for their opinions on these changes? Hiring and retaining accredited teachers is a challenge. Therefore, teacher perception should be heavily considered with these decisions. I personally favor a scale from 50 to 100 and retakes of tests and assignments. However, I am concerned about not having due dates. This seems likely to make the teacher's job more difficult, and I can tell you from personal experience, it makes it harder to follow my child's progress in power school. I also have concerns about the impact on learning effectiveness, but that is too broad to discuss here. I wholeheartedly support the proposals being brought forward by Mrs. Breschak. Thank you.
Michael Evans. And then I have two more signed up. If there's anybody else that wishes to speak, please come down and sign up. Thank you.
Thank you, Board. I don't have any speech prepared. It's going to be hard to follow all that, but I'll do my best. So my wife Hannah and I moved to Manassas in March. We moved here, we're an active-duty military family. I'm an Air Force officer transitioning to my civilian life. And we chose Manassas because we love this town. But unfortunately, our real estate agent and also several neighbors we've talked to have said, "If you ever choose to start a family, then you will need to go to a private school in the area." That if you want to see the best success for your child, they should go to private school. Personally, I think that's a foul. I think our public school system has the opportunity and the capability to be the best it can be. And obviously, in the military, any kind of standard where you get to try again or you get 50% credit, it's not going to cut it. Now, for me personally, one thing the military has taught me is that you've come with a solution when you highlight a problem. So my sister is an educator, 20 years. She actually just finished her specialist degree. So I called her and asked her what her solution would be for this grading policy. And she did note that everything in this grading policy is basically against many of the studies she just finished studying. So my solution would be, effective immediately, for the FY '23, FY '24 year, change this policy to students get to retake any assignment or test up to 10 business days after a deadline set for 80% credit, only up to 80% credit. If they don't attempt a retake after 10 days, they get 0%. For the FY '24, FY '25 year, they would then go to a more adequate policy where you get 0% credit if you miss a deadline, and it's up to teacher discretion or parent advocacy for that student to get an attempt. And if you just don't try, you get 0. That would be my recommendation. I appreciate the opportunity, and I yield the rest of the time. Thank you.
Colonel Ulysses X. White.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the School Board. I'm Colonel Retired Ulysses X. White, and I live and have lived at 8710 Fort Dry for the past, since November of 1977. A little more than 45 years. I appreciate the opportunity to address you this evening, and I come before you because I'm concerned about what I see in the way that this community has changed since I joined it some 45 years ago. Particularly the school system where we train the next leaders of our city, state, and possibly our nation. And I want to preference my remarks by saying that throughout my experience, where I've traveled around the world, I've found that we live in the greatest country in the world. And if we don't pay attention to what's going on, we're going to lose that lofty privilege. Now, I speak from a wee bit of experience, just a wee bit, since three of my grandchildren attended the Manassas School System. I have only one of them finished. Of the two who did not finish, one granddaughter, rather, moved with her parents to another state because of job change by her parents, where she finished high school. And the other granddaughter came home one day when she was in high school in Manassas and explained to her parents that she was not getting much out of her schooling because the teacher was spending most of her time with the Spanish-speaking children. And the school did not offer an arts program to which she could aspire. My son and his wife went to the school and had a conversation with the teachers and the school leadership, and they admitted that what their child had reported was essentially true. So they removed her from the Manassas High School, her parents did, Manassas High School system, and enrolled her in the Metropolitan School of the Arts in Alexandria. After finishing there and spending two years at James Madison University, she enrolled...
Colonel White, could you wrap it up, please? You've reached the end of your three minutes.
I beg your pardon?
Could you please wrap it up? You've reached the end of your three minutes.
Oh, Christ, okay. Well...
I do invite you, if you'd like to email the rest of your comments to us, we would appreciate that.
Well, okay. I'd like to conclude my remarks by repeating the age-old adage, "It takes a village to raise a child," and asking this question. Where is the PTA? I don't see them being involved in our community as succinctly as they were 45 years ago. I would hope that you would get involved with that because that's a very integral part. It takes a village to raise a child. It takes a village to raise a child, and the PTA and the teachers are an integral part of that effort. Okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you very much.
Karen Huff.
Hi, I'm Karen Huff. I just retired from Manassas City Public Schools, and I live on Magnolia Grove Drive with about every child who goes to Manassas City Public Schools. They're all in my neighborhood. I'm going to try to make this fast. I taught elementary school, so you might think that, you know, my opinion doesn't really matter too much because they're little and it doesn't matter. But it does matter because I find that parents don't always understand, unless I give them verbal information, how low their child is. It also affects what the child actually turns in because even as a little kid, they don't always take it too serious. I used to give homework. Now, maybe I gave too much, but I used to give homework, and I have found in the past two or three years, I stopped because I wasn't getting anything. I wasn't getting anything, it wasn't effective. But when I started this, when I started giving that homework many years ago, and I worked here for a long time, it was effective, it did work. It reinforced what I was teaching in school. It was not hard, but it did take time. One of my former students was a mentor in my class this year, and she flat-out told me, she's a four-point, lots of stuff, she's very good. She said, "Ms. Huff, they don't have to do anything." And she was very casual about it. She says, "They don't need to do anything. They know that they can wait until the semester is just about over and then do something and get a 50%." And quite frankly, they don't care. I'm concerned about the kids that I've heard and sometimes seen that are leaving the school during the day and going to Old Town. I've heard this story so many times. I haven't seen it a lot, but a lot of people who are home in the daytime tell me about this. Well, they can leave if they don't really need to do the work. And as a former teacher, my question has always been, I used to say this, and I don't mean to be disrespectful, but why are you up my butt if nobody's up their butt? If that makes sense. If I'm held to an expectation as a teacher to work my heiny off, "I'm really tired," then I believe that the students should understand that as well, that it takes work to get this done. Another reason for this is I've seen parental help or parental involvement die. He said something about the PTA. Well, the PTA doesn't have any Ps anymore, very few Ps. And I understand that, but there should be an expectation for parents. I'm not exactly sure how to do that. I'm sorry, I didn't come with a solution there. But you have to have parents involved in that, otherwise it won't work just at school.
Thank you, Ms. Huff.
Yep.
Emily Husa.
Hello. I'm here tonight as the parent of a three-year-old, and I love him to death, and that's why I'm here, because I believe public school works wholeheartedly. I don't like the grading policy that Manassas has. I taught second, third, and sixth. I taught third-grade parents that they were going from 1s, 3s, and Es, and Ps, and Fs to A, B, C, D, F. And this is how this works, and we have to follow the eighth-grade weighted scale for tests, which means we have to follow the eighth-grade weighted scale for homework because we were across the district. we were across the district, the same weighted grades, the same everything. It's a huge transition. One of the biggest things that I want to see is not everybody gets a pass. I want to see you have to work, but I believe in a growth mindset. I believe that you should be able to retake a test if you don't do well on it, and you come back and you tell your teacher. I really just needed more time to understand how multiplication works. I don't know how to write it down yet. Can you teach me? Can you show me? We need to teach students to advocate for themselves, starting at little. Those, I had eight-year-olds coming to tell me, "I don't understand what reading was about this week, I need more help. Can I take the test on Monday?" Because I was allowed by my district to give retakes, to allow a delayed exam, to use formative assessment and summative assessment equally, and to say, "My summative assessments have deadlines, and nope, I can't go past them because I'm a teacher, and my district says my gradebook closes on this day." And in order for it to close, and for me to accurately report grades to my students and their parents, I have to time, have to have the time to faithfully grade that work, not put a check mark on the top of it because you turned it in on Thursday and my gradebook closes on Friday. Because then, that's not an accurate representation of what you're learning. And I can't have a conversation at a parent-teacher conference, or at a student meeting, or at a retention meeting, to say, "I'm concerned about this child, and here's why." If all of their homework gets turned in to me on Thursday, my gradebook closes on Friday, and I get to go in and put, "Check, check, 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 check." You get your, your homework points, because you turned it all in to me at the last minute, and I didn't even look to see if you just wrote zeros for your math answers. It's just the worksheet is filled out. And times that, when I taught sixth grade, I had 120 kids. If I had to do all of that for 90 of them, that's a scary thought to me from a teaching standpoint. Parents need to do better, too, but teachers need to have the backup from the board. Thank you.
Anna Di Maria.
Hi, I'm Anna Di Maria, and I am currently a third-grade teacher here at Manassas City Public Schools. So, I just have a list here, your driver's license tests, the SAT, the ACT, Praxis tests, national board certifications, registered nurse board exams, the MCAT, medical board exams, the LSAT, the BAR, GED tests, the architect registration exam, the fundamentals of engineering exam, the principles and practice of engineering exam, the uniform CPA exam, the Virginia real estate license exam, the National Interstate Council of State Boards of Cosmetology, written and practical exams, tradesmen's exams, the North American Veterinarian Licensing Exam, the Veterinarian Technician National Exam, SOL tests. These are all examples of assessments that allow you to retake the exam if you don't get the score you want the first time. When these real-world tests allow our stu, allow for retakes, why would we deprive our students of this opportunity? I encourage my students to retake assessments when they don't do as well as they would like. It teaches them to work hard, to persevere, to analyze mistakes that they previously made, and that the world is a forgiving place, full of second chances. Retakes do not diminish my understanding of how my students are progressing in class. When my students take a test, I am constantly walking around my classroom. I can see who is taking their time, who is rushing, who is working the problems out, who is just guessing. I can see the mistakes and the successes that are made. I am able to give them feedback about their testing performance and where they need to improve immediately. They then get to go put that advice to work when they retake the test. I see them look at the questions they got wrong, and analyze their thinking and why they got that question wrong. It's amazing to see the realization on their faces when they discover for themselves what tripped them up, and they are less likely to make that mistake in the future. And thanks to the technol, technological testing resources that we have, I'm able to look at every single attempt to see what mistakes they made on the first try, if they are able to fix those mistakes on the retake. And so then, I know if they are progressing, or if they made the same mistakes, I know that I need to reteach them. I don't understand why, when our real world is full of second chances, we would keep our children from having them. We are supposed to be preparing our kids for their futures, for their adulthood. We will do them a disservice if we don't allow them to practice and grow their determination, grit, and faith that they can bounce back from mistakes. Adults get second chances, shouldn't our kids?
Tammy Potts.
Hi, I'm Tammy Potts. I live on Church Street, and I'm speaking as a teacher in support of our current grading policy, with the only changes I would suggest to be more specificity and accountability, not teacher autonomy. I've already spoken about some of the teachers that already find the loopholes in the policy, and do not allow kids to retake, or give them the 50% grade floor that they're supposed to, so I'm not going to belabor that. But, one of the things I want to point out is, you, the board, approved a cycle that worked. You approved the strategic plan, knowing that we cannot intervene our way out of a tier-one problem. Our issue is the tier-one instruction, simple as that. And if we don't focus on that, and make sure that we're not punishing the kids as a result, that's a real problem. So, what does success look like? Well, as Anna mentioned, there are a lot of retakes in life. We have lots of multiple chances. We need to be giving kids that chance. And it doesn't come down to a grade, or how many times it takes to get there, or how many retakes they took. Some of you attended the summer school graduation, perfect example of multiple opportunities for success, instead of creating the barriers for students. Virginia's already created enough barriers. They have to pass a certain number of SOLs, a certain number of classes, we've already done that. So, why would we do that in our district? One other thing, if you've ever been around me for very long, you've probably heard me say, "You've got a Maslow before you can Bloom." So, anybody in here that are not educators, those are theorists, look them up later, Bloom and Maslow. Maslow's hierarchy of needs, if you look at cognition and competence, those are adjacent to each other. That's what our retake policy, that's what our 50% grade floor allows for. They cannot learn without those other pieces in place. I just broke it down to you like a fraction. Make the right choice. To quote Jenny Dean, "You do your part, your part, I'll do mine."
David Keller.
Good evening, it's good to see you guys again after today's convocation. I'm really excited for this school year. Some context for me, I'm the son of a teacher, and also want to say I'm a product of private school. I have been in private school since I was five years old, where I started Atlantic Shores at Virginia Beach, moved to Florida, went to East Hill Christian School, moved to Maryland at Child Grade Christian Academy, and then for six and a half years, attended Liberty University. So, I think I understand the private school aspect. I also want to say I'm a student of ADHD. Legally, private schools do not have to provide accommodations. It's actually one of the main reasons I don't go to private school, because I like being in these trenches, working with students like me, which made me dive into it when I got to college, and I heard friends of mine quoting teachers and stuff in the past, that the traditional grading system that got implemented in the 40s, we pushed it hard for the 50s and 60s to fight the Soviets, and now we're seeing that you have to hit certain boxes, and some of our kids just simply don't hit that. Continuing on my story, I never got a single accommodation, and yeah, I graduated in six and a half years after failing my first semester of college, where a very strict system, from being the son of a teacher, it was psychology, and I'm not really good at psychology. But, my final class was French, and I can only say baguette in French, but my final French teacher, what he did was, I came in looking like a wreck, he said, "Come back in three days." I was allowed to take that test for the first time, where I could take breaks, I could talk to the teacher, I could do anything, I could walk around. I never knew that existed, because that's the gift of public school, which is something as America, we decided to do back in 2003 and '04 when we passed IDEA. And we, as a country, decided we should educate everybody. It's something that we do. I don't, I struggle at times with the current grading policy, because yes, I can see how 1,000 retakes, or at times, as sped, I don't grade as many papers, but I'm seeing coworkers at the end, because the system hasn't been fully enforced, maybe we should have more strict, more strict deadlines for assignments. But if I wasn't given that second chance, I wouldn't be here. If that second chance wasn't extended to some of my friends, maybe, they'd be in different careers. My last two, my last school was Alta Vista, Virginia, which is an old factory town, and I had a bunch of kids there, as we're watching the meth belt move from the Appalachians, move east, I'm watching these kids that they had a chance, they take the test, they fail, and they're told, "Good luck, get a job at McDonald's," which we know doesn't pay enough. And then also, working through COVID, seeing parents taking three jobs, which takes time, it's a cycle. So, I want to encourage us, we need to keep extending this mercy, but we need to make sure that we're providing the structure for our kids to succeed, because it's hard being a kid right now, we know that. TikTok exists, and from there, we know that they need these second chances, but they also need that wall at times, where for me, it was a wake-up call, but if I did not get that second chance, I would not have graduated, I would not have done anything I would be doing right now, based off that. Thank you so much.
Jack.
Hi, my name's Jack Spall, a lifelong citizen of Manassas. I went to K through 12 in the public school system. I always liked my high school, I thought it was great. I graduated, I went to Virginia Tech, my school let me do that. I always thought that this new policy was probably more bed, better than, than it was anything worse. I think that giving kids a chance to catch up when they're late always made sense to me. I think there's a lot of people who don't have the opportunity to do it on time. It's not always people who choose not to do it on time. I was thinking about a friend I had once, who was trying to get something finished, that had a pretty hard due date, he was pretty freaked out about it. I asked him if he could just email his teacher, and the teacher said, "Yeah, don't worry about it, I'll do it next week." I think that kind of attitude just kind of makes people a lot happier, in a time where there's enough stress going on. And obviously, we want the best for our school. It's a very humble city, surrounded by some of the richest and largest counties in the entire country, who obviously attract a lot of attention when it comes to people who move here, looking for chances for their children. But I think it's important to remember that Manassas City Public Schools still is a fantastic opportunity for anyone who decides that they want to learn. And it's not up to anyone to decide when you get to learn, and you can't force anyone to learn either. That's all I have to say about that. But, I support the policy as it is. I would really be most concerned with input from teachers. I see one of the biggest detriments is increased workload on them. But, other than that, that's all I have to say.
Lisa Chua.
Hello, thanks for allowing me the time to speak. I'm a resident, all three of my kids are K through 12 Eagle graduates, 2006, 10, and 13. So, I can't imagine how hard my job would be nowadays to try to get my kids to do their work. My husband ran a business in the city back then, and I was the Lone Ranger at home with them, trying to get the schoolwork done. So, I just feel like, well, it's been beneficial to hear both sides of the story here. One of your speakers mentioned that the Ps are missing from the PTA, but if parents really don't have any clout, taking away any ambition these kids would have to complete their work on time, I'm not sure, you know, how many Ps you're going to get back in the PTA. On the other hand, we're also talking about second chances. I think it's a stretch to, to teach kids at an early age that the world is ripe with second chances. You may be fortunate enough to get one, but that's not a guarantee, and I think we're setting children up for a dismal experience outside the schoolhouse. I think deadlines need to be adhered to, if a child needs remediation, pursue that. I'm a child that had to have remediation in math, so there was many a day spent after school, you know, trying to get my grades up. And I thought that was the purpose of quizzes every so many days, or so throughout the grading period, to see where a child was at as far as mastery goes. So, I'm not sure why, you know, we're waiting till the end of a grading period or whatever to figure out if the kid's on track, and then keep letting them retake tests. But, anyway, that's all I wanted to say, and I hope you'll consider a change, or at least an improvement. Thank you.
Sarah Wanyaga.
I'm Sarah. You don't get, you don't get a passing grade, or even a 50% grade, if you don't show up to work. What you do is you get fired. We need a grading and, and assignment policy that holds our children accountable, and teaches them that if you don't perform, then you get fired, or you have consequences. So, I urge you to, I've looked at Member Bracia's proposed proposals, and I think they're good ones. So, I urge you to adopt them. Don't adopt a grading policy that doesn't hold our students accountable. Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Clark, could you please sign in? Just so we have a record of it. Go ahead.
Okay, thanks. So, I'm, my name is Malferius, I think I know everybody here, and I came to, in support of changing the grading system back to something that we have, our kids can be held accountable. Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. My name is Malferius, and I think I know most of you guys, but, and I've spoken to you about this, I talked to Dr. Newman about this when he arrived five years ago, and we talked about the power of high expectations and the power of low expectations. I, I also heard the counterargument today from a couple of people that, you know, I said, "I get it, you know, everybody needs a second chance in life," right? But, these are also foundational periods for, for our kids. And I could tell you something about the power of high expectations. When I started asking questions, because I don't have any kids in the school system, why should I care? Right? Well, I care, because my taxes are going up, and my property value wasn't going up according, like Arlington or Ashburn. I was like, "Hey, that's weird, because we should have a really good school system." My parents moved here because of the school system. So, when I asked that, and I was told, "No, it's actually not highly rated, it's actually poorly rated, according to all these websites." So, I came to the chair at the time, I think it was Dr. Williams, yeah, Mr. Williams. Mr. Williams, I spoke to him, and I said, "What, what's happening here?" Because I hear from other school board members that it's our demographics, our, you know, what's our demographics? Because we have a lot of Latino children, a lot of poor children, is that, is that the reason we can't succeed? That was a basic question I asked. And, because that's what it came off to me, like, somebody's telling me that we, we can't succeed because we're poor and Latino. Well, I think I heard another immigrant speaking here about her experience about the real world, right? The power of high expectations. When I started asking these questions, I got involved, I started to ask, "What's going on with our sports?" Because sports are, to me, are foundational, music programs are foundational for extracurricular activities, to hold a kid accountable, to get their uniforms ready, to make sure that they're on time, because it gets them prepared for the real world, right? But, so I asked, "What's the problem?" "Oh, it's demographics." Again, I, that doesn't, that boggles the mind, what do you mean demographics? So, I went to something that I know, and that's, I went to the football coach, I said, "What's going on?" He's the only one person that, that was in the leadership position, that said, didn't say a word about demographics. He was, he played with a group that he was dealt. We had, I think they had 53 students to begin with, and I was so glad to see one of them here. He was a freshman at the time. At the end of the school year, we had 23 kids, because he held them accountable, and they were hard as nails at the end, because they knew what it was like to show up on time, to be held accountable. And, I'll leave you with this.
Thank you, Mr. Arias.
Thank you, I'll leave you with this.
Okay.
Thank you, I will sign in, thank you.
Thanks.
But I just want to finish with this. I think we need that structure. And I can tell you specific stories of how kids will succeed with some structure. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would wish to address the board tonight?
Hi, my name is Wendy Maldonado. I wasn't planning on speaking today, but I think this is a very personal, like, subject for me, because I have ADHD. So when I was growing up, the school system didn't work for me, because my way of learning isn't as everybody else. So I can't work with certain deadlines. I need second chances. I am smart, but I couldn't, like, give my homework on time, I couldn't give projects on time, even if I really, really wanted to. Something in my brain doesn't work, like other people. So I was lucky that in my country, the system is like here. You get a 50%, even if you do nothing. And that allowed me to fail, like, everything I really wanted to succeed, but I couldn't. And then I could pass my test with an A+, which I think is a higher note in this country. And that allowed me to finish my education. If it weren't for that, I would have never finished. So for kids like me, they need this chance. And if it's taken away just because of not allowing kids to be lazy, which I don't believe laziness exists, then they will be, they will fall through the cracks, you know, like I will have fallen through the cracks. So I think this policy is actually good for everyone, because the kids who need second chances can get them. They are smart, they just need some support. And I think the policy is not the problem. The problem is no one is making sure these kids are doing okay. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wished to speak? All right, I'll move along on the agenda. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda, please?
Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented.
Mrs. Brooks, your microphone.
Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Brooks, second by Mr. Hollingsworth, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Vote for Mrs. Stevens? She did? Okay. Seven oh. Thank you very much. All right. Moving on to our discussion agenda, first up is Mr. Andy Hawkins. Will present the fiscal year 2025 draft budget development calendar for the School Board to discuss.
Good evening. School Board Chair Ebert and Dr. Newman and School Board members. Even though the Journal Assembly and the Governor haven't done their job yet for FY24, our current budget, we're still, I don't have an agreement. Time still marches on, and we have to be prepared as we go forward for our FY25 budget. In front of you is the proposed calendar. It's similar to what we've had in past years, where we'll begin working together on having a budget work session on October the 3rd for the capital improvement plan. We'll have our, we'll present that plan to the community at the October 24th School Board meeting, all the way up until we get to the December the 12th meeting, where we will hopefully have agreement with the School Board, and we will approve the capital improvement plan. After the 1st of the year, we'll begin working on the budget work sessions for the operating fund, and we will hopefully have budget agreement with the School Board during the last School Board meeting in March, when we will then start presenting our budget to our, to City Council, generally speaking, the last of March or the 1st of April. So that date hasn't been determined yet at this time. So if this is just the first discussion part of it, we will have it on the agenda for the next School Board meeting for approval. Are there any questions or concerns at this time about the budget calendar for next year? FY25 budget calendar?
Seeing and hearing none, I took a look at it, looks good to me.
All right, thank you.
Good job, thank you. Next up on our discussion agenda is student achievement. Mr. Craig Gaffeler, Executive Director of Student Achievement, and Mr. Ed Stevenson, Director of Instruction, and Dr. Goldsong, Principal of Hayden Elementary School, will provide updates for the 23-24 school year.
Good evening, Chair Steberg, Vice Chair Stevens, Dr. Newman, members of the board. So tonight, I am here with members of our team to give some student achievement updates for the 23-24 school year. What we're going to be talking about is several things this evening, but before I do that, I do want to just recognize my team. Dr. Ed Stevenson is our new Director of Instruction, and Dr. Laura Goldsong, who is the new proud principal of Hayden Elementary School, who was our former Director of Instruction, started much of this work and has seen it through, continue to continue through the school year. I also want to just recognize a very important member of our team who is not here with us tonight, and that is Katie Keegan, our Director of Professional Learning. She is an integral part of this team, and the work that you're going to see tonight, she was, it wouldn't have happened without her and her collaboration with this team. You also will not see tonight, the team that was also part of this, is our instructional facilitators, all of our content coordinators. This work tonight that we are representing is the culmination of many, many hours of many dedicated professionals here in Manassas City. So I just want to recognize those folks and also our teachers. We had many teachers this summer who worked on curriculum, rewriting curriculum, contributing to what you're going to hear tonight in terms of our new curriculum documents, which we launched today with all of our schools across the division. So I just want to take a minute before we start to recognize those folks, because it wouldn't have happened without them. So tonight, we want to talk about revised instructional support and the documents that we have prepared for the, for the new school year, bringing our strategic priorities to life through a cycle that works, our teacher support through our team program, and how we're supporting our new teachers here in Manassas City this year, and then our partnership with Virtual Virginia. So over the last several months, the Professional Learning Team and the Department of Instruction have worked collaboratively with teachers and school leaders to update instructional documents to better support our efforts to improve student learning. These changes bring our documents into better alignment with a cycle that works, standards-based teaching and learning, they serve as stronger tools for meeting the diverse needs of students, and provide easier access and greater clarity for our teachers. It's also important to know that over the, during the last semester of last school year, each of our instructional facilitators met with, with each team and each department to get feedback on our new support documents. And so there was a lot of feedback that we saw from our staff, and so you will see that represented today is their voice in what we, the final product was, that we actually delivered and rolled out today to our staff across the division. So with that, I want to ask Dr. Laura Goldsong to come up, and who was integral in developing these new documents for us here in Manassas City.
Good evening. Good evening. Is that better?
Yes.
Great. I'm excited to be standing here and sharing with you the realization of months, months of planning and responding to the needs and the data that we got from our students and, importantly, our teaching staff, and how we were implementing the cycle that works. And when you look at that cycle, and it goes all the way around, and there was the orange arrow that said curriculum planning. And so it was our turn to really look deeply at how, what we had learned in unpacking, in developing common formative assessments. And so you can't improve one part of a system without then going back and looking at, "How are we supporting that?" And that's how we landed in this discussion of, were our documents supporting high-quality development of instructional planning? And so what we've done is taken our curriculum planning, and we've turned it into unit planning, not turned it into, but really looked more broadly at the standards, and started with unit planning. We developed a planning process at the unit level that drew upon the work that collaborative learning teams did last year to focus on student learning rather than teaching. Right? You can't teach, you can't learn without good teaching, but if we look at the learning, that's where we see the evidence of the teaching. With this process, teams unpack standards and develop the common assessment to determine a progression of learning with clearly defined goals. The process utilizes practices that were established last year through a cycle that works. So if you look at the graphic here, you can see where we're going to unpack those standards. We're going to define success criteria. What does success look like when a student has mastered this content? We're going to, how are we going to assess that? And what is the language objective that's going to be embedded in that lesson? Then we're going to ask those essential questions, and we're going to develop the learning goals. And then from that, from the learning goal, we will create a learning activity that will lead students to construct that learning for themselves. And then, of course, we will have common formative assessment throughout. This graphic shows the efficiency of this process and how teams could very effectively move from the big picture of a unit plan with long-term outcomes to a set of targeted lessons that build on each other to spur consistent student learning and growth. So here, you can see an example of the unit planning guide, that we collaboratively developed to align the planning process with a cycle that works. The curriculum for each subject and grade level is driven by these guides. Right? Our curriculum is the standard, right? The framework that comes from the VDOE, right? Those are the standards. These documents lead teaching teams through developing instruction and planning in a very comprehensive and systematic way. It contains content-specific resources for unpacking those standards and the planning and delivery of instruction. Its companion is the unit lesson plan. The centerpiece of the planning guide is this unit lesson plan. The resources included in this tool help teaching teams to plan and deliver instruction that align with content standards and accurately measures and targets the needs of students. The tool features a clear structure with color coding to help teams connect every aspect of instructional planning process to the cycle that works. Purple is unpacking, blue is assessment, right? Orange is curriculum development. So if we look at this visual, really helps us understand how that unit lesson planning process helps bring a cycle that works to life for our teacher, a cycle that works in action. From unpacking standards and developing accurate, accurate common assessments, to effective instructional planning and delivery, and finally, to assessment of student learning and the use of data, reflection, discussion, to determine the best ways to address their needs. So we will unpack those standards, and we will develop a common assessment for the whole unit, and then we just dive right into that cycle, which is a, you know, it's a plan-do-study act, right? It is continuous improvement, constantly evaluating the needs of the students and how we need to respond. So where will the teachers access these documents? When we interviewed every CLT K through 8 last year, facilitated by our amazing instructional facilitators, and then many, I can't, I don't have the number right off the top of my head, but many, many of the CLTs at the high school, we asked for significant feedback, not only about the content and the substance of, "How are you planning?" And what is the cognitive process that we're doing? It's really, operationally, what's the best way to access these documents? Because that's about time management. And so we heard a lot about less clicks, we heard a lot about being able to be flexible in going back and forth from content, especially at the elementary level, where they might want to be in reading but also have social studies open. So this is the Instructional Planning Hub. The Instructional Planning Hub will be able, the teachers are going to be able to access the support documents through this, it's a, it's a Google, it's a Google website that's accessed through the MCPS Google Workspace. This is the landing page, the Instructional Planning Hub, and it features visually, it's very clear and simple to navigate. You just click on the gear, if you're pre-K4 or 5, 6, 7, 8. It will lead you into being able to find the pacing calendar for the grade level or the content area in the case of the high school. This site was built based on the feedback, like I said, received from teachers as we interviewed them about what they needed. And we conducted those, those interviews, our instructional facilitators did, those were really conducted in April and early May of last year. So within, here's an example of the planning calendar. So if you clicked on one of those gears, I'm going to back up, so there we go. If you clicked on pre-K4, when you open up that gear, there are more gears that say K1, 2, 3, 4. You click into one of those, and this calendar will open. And as you can see, this is November, you can see, it will always be the same organization. Orange is English Language Arts, blue is math, green is science, purple is social studies. Those are live links that you see, they're in the pacing calendars, that take you to, just for example, Unit 3 Soil, and that actually has a local alternative assessment there. That's what would be happening in that classroom, November 1st through 3rd. That's what they're teaching, that's what you're going to be able to see. This is going to assist teachers with planning for multiple subject areas, and will encourage cross-curricular connections whenever possible. And in, you can get to this in about three clicks. Those unit planning guides open up in a new window. So like I said earlier, if I'm in English Language Arts and I have my unit plan up, and I want to look to see if I can teach reading and content, I can just go right back to another tab and open social studies.
All right, I'm going to turn this back over to Mr. Gaffeler to talk about our team program.
Thank you. Just to add a doctor, but Dr. Goldsong, I was at a school today, and when they were learning about the new Instructional Planning Hub, and there were some fist bumps and some fist pumps that they said, "We actually listened." So it made them easier for them to access, and they were excited about it, that it's going to really help them in their planning, so we're excited about that. So I want to talk, we welcomed over 100 new educators to the MCPS family. That includes our classroom facilitators, our teacher associates, our beginning teachers, newly hired and experienced teachers. We have a team program, a teacher education and mentor program that Ms. Keegan has built with her team, and it is a very robust support system for our new, our new educators here in Manassas City. I also want I also wanted to recognize, last year, you all approved the addition of two professional growth specialists, Mr. Dean Stevenson and Jen Mullen, Ms. Jen Mullen, as growth specialists. And their sole responsibility is supporting our new educators. And that has made a huge difference. So the instructional hub that is just one of the multiple strategies that we are using this year to support quality student learning. To help in our efforts to attract and retain talent educators, we are building a pool of professionals to bring into our schools to support student learning. We hired classroom facilitators, individuals with 60 college credits. We've hired teacher associates, individuals with an undergraduate or graduate degree who are a year or less from finishing their teacher preparation program. We have beginning teachers, individuals with a provisional or renewable teaching license, and no previous full-time teaching experience. And we've hired newly hired, experienced teachers, teachers with prior teaching experience who are new to MCPS. And so we are using this flexibility that is available to us in hiring classroom educators to provide multiple pathways for, to become an MCPS teacher, which in turn increases our pool of quality people we can draw on upon our staff in our programs this year. And so the team program provides support for all of these different categories of educators that we have joining us this year. So we know retention and training are just as important as our efforts to recruit high-quality educators to the MCPS classrooms. This visual illustrates the way our teacher education and mentor program, our team program scales professional learning to the needs of our new teachers, so that they have the necessary support to be successful in MCPS over both the short and long term. By meeting our new teachers where they are through tailored training and mentoring, we improve job satisfaction, retention, and performance. And so we have a Year One, a Year Two, and a Year Three program that we use. And then we have a transition program for our newly hired, experienced teachers, our net track. And so there's something for everyone here so that we can make sure that they're successful, because if they're successful, our kids are successful. We also leverage the existing team program structure to support the needs of our newest MCPS educators. Our classroom facilitators receive support from instructional facilitators using a cohort model in combination with in-classroom mentoring and support from retired principals. Our teacher associates are assigned a mentor and receive support from our professional growth specialists in a similar manner to our beginning teachers. They also participate in a cycle that works as a member of their collaborative learning team. Our newly hired, experienced teachers receive one-on-one and small group mentoring within their school with additional support provided on an as-needed basis. And we're not just focused on our new teachers. We understand that all of our staff need support for their professional growth. This is the why, this is why we will have professional learning for all leadership and instructional staff that aligns with the key strategic priorities and resources that we are using to support them. We will continue to build everyone's skills in a cycle that works through a focus on data reflection, discussion, and curriculum planning. We will also be supporting inclusive and collaborative learning environments through a focus on foundational literacy, our quality Tier One instruction, and increased student engagement through cooperative learning structures. All instructional and leadership staff will learn how these connect and build on strategic priorities. And this week, all of our staff across the entire division will be having professional learning on cooperative learning structures and how to engage students as well as inclusive practices. So every teacher in Manassas City over the course of the next week will be involved in these trainings. With that, I want to turn the presentation over to Dr. Ed Stevenson, who will talk about Virtual Virginia.
Thank you. Good evening. Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, Dr. Newman, and members of the board. For the final portion of our presentation, I will be providing a brief overview of our partnership with Virtual Virginia for the coming school year. So for 40 years, the Virginia Department of Education has provided, through the program that is now known as Virtual Virginia, a variety of distance learning opportunities for K through 12 students. Throughout its history, Virtual Virginia has made digital learning available to all learners in the Commonwealth with no barriers to enrollment, regardless of each student's academic history or geographic location. For Virtual Virginia, success is all about providing educational opportunities to all Virginia students and helping students grow academically. So why Virtual Virginia? Our partnership with them provides many advantages. It provides students access to additional certified teachers that are not available to teach in-person at their schools. To make the partnership work, we hire classroom facilitators and teacher associates to partner with our in-person and Virtual Virginia teachers to ensure quality learning in the classroom. This creates a pipeline of future educators that we can bring into our school system as teachers as they finish their education. Because this partnership significantly increases the number of certified teachers available in our schools, it also reduces the use of long-term substitutes we would normally need to employ. This not only benefits students directly by increasing their access to certified teachers, but it also allows our pool of substitutes to better meet the temporary employment needs of schools as they arise during the year. At the elementary and intermediate school levels, we will pair each virtual teacher with an in-person teacher and classroom facilitator or teacher associate. Where this pairing is needed, virtual teachers will provide science, math intervention, and in some instances, social studies instruction. These students will then rotate to their in-person teacher for the remainder of their instruction. At all levels, we will use our 21 virtual teachers to deliver live, interactive instruction in the classroom and resources and assignments through the Canvas Learning Management System. Students will be supervised and supported during class time by an in-person classroom facilitator or teacher associate as they work with their virtual teacher. These professionals will serve the role of the classroom mentor in the model that you see pictured on this slide. To make sure that the students receive the best possible instruction, we will be working very closely with Virtual Virginia to ensure their teachers have everything they need to ensure high-quality instruction, teaching, and learning in the classroom. Both our instruction and professional learning departments are committed to collaborating and using the proven systems we have, like a cycle that works, to support all teachers in their efforts to deliver on our division's goals for high-level student learning and achievement. Thank you.
We would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mrs. Brooks?
Thank you for your presentation. The hub, I just want to, I just want to commend you for that. The teacher that I, you know, teacher me is like, wow, that would be just so nice to have when, you know, you're scrambling to try and, you know, get all those lesson plans done. And to have that, you know, thank you for listening to the teacher's input and creating that, because it's phenomenal, and thank you. That's all.
Mrs. Spall?
Yes, for slide number nine, I just want to make sure that I do understand that's the hub that Ms. Brooks was just referring to. That is going to click directly to, within an additional click, to slide number seven, which is the unit lesson plan. Is that correct?
So slide number seven is the calendar?
The unit lesson plan.
The unit lesson plan, no, the, this.
Through the calendar.
Through the calendar. So the teachers will create these unit lesson plans at the school level. Okay, so we come from the hub, really is for all MCPS teachers. And we click into our grade level, and we get into that calendar. And that's what, across all five elementary schools, across BIS and MIS, and then METS, those grade level bands, all across MCPS, they will have access to this hub. They'll click into their gear, and then they'll click into their grade level, and that calendar will open. And then when they open that, the unit planning guide, let me reference. The unit planning guide.
Like slide number six?
Yes, slide number six. That is what will, so this has been partially completed by our content specialists in the instructional, on the instructional team. So our English Language Arts, Math, Social Studies, and Science. We have created the unit planning guides, and those are not editable by the teachers, right? That's the information we're providing division-wide. So then, at the school level, with the support of the instructional facilitator, the teams will create the unit plan, the unit lesson plan. And they will use this document to support them in, so this document will, is designed to sit side by side with the curriculum framework and the standards from the state of Virginia. And referencing sort of this organizational document and the standards themselves, the teachers will create the unit plan. And when we say progression of learning, if we look at a big standard, say subtraction or addition, the progression of learning means what are the steps that I need to take for students to master that standard? And so the unit planning guide is the place where the teachers kind of take over, and they use all of the resources that we've provided then to take that and create those lesson plans. So at every school, the grade levels will be creating those plans. And that's where it's differentiated for the needs of the school, the grade level, and the kids in our classrooms.
And that's what, I don't want to go, I'm not an educator. I don't even play one on TV. But I, I wonder, and I don't want to take any autonomy away.
Exactly.
But would you ever get to a point where, you know, you start reviewing these, and there would be maybe a suggestion of, you know, the best practice that you've seen for that particular lesson plan available to maybe measure against?
So there are instructional resources that will be embedded. That's the blue section in this unit planning guide. Many of those are activities, assessments, and research-based practices. I can think especially in our math, when we're looking at the concrete representational abstract model. We call it the CRA model. But when you come in our classroom and you see kids working with Unifix cubes, like that is best practices. And so yes, that resource will be embedded there.
Okay, and then I think my only other question regarding Virtual Virginia. My understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, but we are still hiring, and there are instances where there could be multiple in-person instructors that would also be helping with the online instructor. Is that correct?
No, there's just the pairing of the, either the classroom facilitator or the teacher associate with a Virtual Virginia teacher. Yeah.
Okay, I think.
Mrs. Spall, if I could just also add, we have obviously our math support teachers and our reading support teachers, and they will also be supporting students in those classrooms as well, as we have done last year as well. So there's lots of support for students.
Just wanted to verify, thank you.
Questions for Mrs. Breja.
So I'm going to piggyback on where you were kind of going with your questioning. On slide 17, I didn't, oh, that's not, wrong slides, okay. So I didn't quite understand the rotation of adults that the kids were going to be working. This was, so you were talking about elementary through intermediate. Part of the day was going to be with a Virtual Virginia instructor and a classroom mentor, and then another part of the day was going to be with the Virtual Virginia instructor and a, you see, I'm.
Yeah, okay, so.
Help me out here.
So basically, if I'm, you know, looking at it from the perspective of the child, I'm going to spend part of my day within the classroom with the Virtual Virginia teacher and the classroom facilitator. And then, when I'm done with that part of the instruction, I'm going to move to an in-person teacher for the rest of my instruction.
I guess I'm, and these are elementary, these are kind of younger students.
Yeah, it's, we, we're going to have this model with grades one through four.
I guess I'm just a little confused, because we don't usually rotate teachers with kids who are that young. Or do we have any concerns about that?
I would say, what I would say is that a lot of care is going to be taken, especially with the younger students, to make sure that that transition is very smooth for them.
It also just seems in general, three, three adults, I mean, I know our children have access to lots of adults. You know, we have math specialists, reading specialists, and just kind of in general. But a core instructional team, where usually those grades, it would be one or two people, is now three people. It seems suboptimal from like a logistical point of view. I mean, I guess I know that we're working as hard as we can to get as many certified teachers in the classroom as we can. So I answered my own questions, sorry.
Correct.
I did have a question about the format of the delivery that, you know, we had corresponded about briefly before. I did get an opportunity to peek in on some virtual classrooms that we had last year. And that format was teacher beamed to the front of the room, classroom mentor, you know, helping the students around, you know. But nobody was wearing headphones. The teacher was, I mean, she was stationary on the screen, on the center screen. But this format, we seem to be changing to teachers now on the small screen. Students are wearing headphones, so I guess I'm just concerned that the distraction level, the temptation to open up other websites or something else might be high in that circumstance. So I wanted to ask about that.
We're very confident about the level of engagement that there will be with a classroom facilitator in the room and the Virtual Virginia teacher to make sure that the use of technology in the room is always on task.
Are virtual teachers accounted for at all in the school quality profiles?
You're talking about the state.
The state.
State school quality profiles, so I don't design those, but there's no like separation out of virtual versus in-person teachers in those profiles. They're focused primarily on the qualifications of those teachers, which I would say, actually, in this case, it's a good thing, because these teachers are very, very qualified that we're bringing in, yeah.
For the, so I know this sample size is small, that we have a small set of virtual teachers relative to all of our in-person teachers. Will we be making any effort, you know, as, because we've had experience now with virtual instruction for a while now, are we making any effort to track any differences between the results generated with virtual instruction versus in-person instruction?
So we are always tracking the progress of our students across a number of metrics, and certainly there'll be the ability as we look at assessments, as we look at grades throughout the year, to see how the students are performing in these classrooms versus the others. I will say that, you know, when you look at research on student achievement, teacher quality is one of the top indicators. It often is more powerful than, more powerful of a predictor of student achievement than a specific type of a model. So we really feel that this approach puts our kids in the best possible position to be successful.
I mean, you guys are clearly making the best out of what is a suboptimal situation. Obviously, everybody wants an in-person certified teacher in every classroom. So thank you for your work doing that. I will be interested to see how this continues to develop. Thank you.
Mrs. Williams, did you have any questions?
Yes. Let's go back to the planning calendar and the great, I love technology. I think this is just fantastic. The unit planning guides, you explained it very well. When it goes back to the teacher and helps with the teacher and their actual planning, their classroom and their instruction, does the tech, is the technology able to, whatever they have in their planning calendar that they can use in this website, does it also connect seamlessly with school?
does it also connect seamlessly with Schoology, or are they doing multiple clicks trying to get any kind of documents or, or worksheets that people are working in Schoology? Do you understand my question?
I think, yes, I think I do. This actually is accessed in the MCPS bookmarks dropdown, so you don't need to access any of this material through Schoology.
Okay, okay.
This, and it's just, if you log in MCPS and you open Chrome, the MCPS Bookmarks folder, click there, I think it is the second from the bottom, and you should have view access to that.
Okay, perfect. And, yeah, I was, also, I also want to welcome Dr. Stevens, and tonight's the first night I've actually put eyes on you, and so it's fantastic meeting you, I wanted to say that. And the, I just want to share with the public, the Virtual Virginia teachers, we've, we've had similar experiences like this last year, this isn't new, and it's unfortunate that we have such a teacher shortage nationwide, that this is the route we have to go. My question is, the instructional facilitators, are we trying to strategically, I don't know what their education level is, are we trying to strategically, they've got their, their feet in our classroom, are we strategically trying to get them certified so then we can have additional teachers?
Yeah, that, that would be the goal. The goal would be to build a pool of educators and to encourage them to continue and eventually become fully certified teachers working here.
Okay. Thank you. And then thank, sorry, thank you all for your hard work. You can tell a lot of the time.
Don't sit down, Dr. Stevenson.
Uh-oh. Thank you.
Sorry, I've got, got a couple of questions that Vice Chair Stevens has sent in. So for Dr. Stevenson, how will planning CLTs work when there is a Virtual Virginia teacher?
So we expect it to work very well, very effectively. Obviously, they'll have to participate remotely, but all of our, I've actually been out to see a few of these rooms, our CLT rooms are actually set up very well for that, so.
Great. And the other questions are for Dr. Goldsung. Vice Chair Stevens says, is the hub a pacing guide?
The calendar serves to, as a year-long pacing guide, and what a teacher can do is look month by month at what units they're teaching across all contents. If you're, if you're a teacher that teaches four contents, if you're in the upper grades where you are departmentalized, and especially at the high school where you're teaching one subject, that's what you see as your year-long pacing.
Great. And that, it allows for personalization, I thought you addressed that.
The calendar does not, the calendar is, that is a division-wide calendar.
But the lesson plans do?
The lesson plans are.
Okay.
When they create the lesson plans at the school level, that is where it's personalized for the students sitting in our classrooms.
Okay. And then the last question for you, Dr. Goldsung, again from Vice Chair Stevens, can you define standards-based instruction for everyone?
Standards-based instruction, so the Virginia Department of Education has shared with us the standards, and you know, we're, we're doing some comments on math right now, we've just adopted some social studies standards. The state of Virginia tells us what children need to know at what grade level and what standards or content or knowledge they need to master in order to move on in their learning. And so standards-based instruction is that we are looking at, just for example, I'll say in math, in fifth grade, that students in fifth grade need to be able to master these standards, and, and they're really written like an outline, right? So there's a standard, and then there's subbullets of how you're gonna get there to understand a, a concept like multiplication or fractions, right, or irrational numbers. And so we will pace out over the course of a year when those standards, this is the progression of learning, when those standards need to be taught, so that by, in our case, the end of May, students have mastered that content in their grade level. Standards-based planning is when we plan our lesson, instruction, and delivery to make it so that the students can achieve mastery of those standards by the end of the grade level.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Stevenson, one more question rolled in. Do the Virtual Virginia teachers teach anyone other than our students?
No, our Virtual Virginia teachers just teach our students. They've been assigned just to Manassas City Schools.
Wonderful. Okay, well, thank you. Did you have a follow-up question, Mrs. Spol?
I did. Just while the Brain Trust is here, I wanted to just ask an anecdotal question. When it is time in the educational journey for students to receive syllabi, whether that's METS or Osborn, or even intermediate schools, do those, do those syllabes still have due dates on them?
I'm not sure the Brain Trust has the answer tonight. I have not looked at this.
Maybe you could just get back to us.
Yeah, I can get back to you. I've not looked at a syllabi recently.
I, I would think that there's still suggested dates, I mean, but I, I'm just curious.
Sure.
Thank you. I guess I should have asked that ahead of time, sorry.
There's no further questions. I'd like to thank you for your presentation this evening. It looks very exciting, and I look forward to hearing what the staff all thinks about it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on, I want to take a moment to recognize some people in the audience. Mr. Tim DiMaria, the Commissioner of the Revenue, is here with us this evening, thank you. And we do have some MEA representatives. I think it's important to point these people out because they do represent educators in our community, they are involved in school board business from time to time. So we have Ginny Higginbotham, who is our, are you the ESP at large, Vice President? Tammy Potts is our Secretary, and Anna DiMaria is our President.
Victoria Diaz.
Oh, and Victoria Diaz is the ESP at large, right? Thank you for being here tonight. Did you want to make a motion, Mrs. Brooks?
Chair, I move to recess. Chair, I move to recess for about five or 10 minutes.
Yeah, how long do the kids get between classes?
Okay, seven minutes.
Six minutes? Can we do six minutes?
Six is good.
We just need a break up here really quick, so we will recess.
Somebody's got a second.
I got a motion from Mrs. Brooks to, and a second by Mrs. Breja, to recess for six minutes. See you back.
Thanks.
Oh, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Hopefully, Mrs. Stevens won.
Okay, we're back. Next up on our agenda is Personnel, Teacher Evaluation with Ms. Billy K. Wingfield.
Good evening. Craig Schfeller and I are pleased to present information about teacher performance evaluation. We're going to highlight some of the revisions made to the Teacher Performance Evaluation Handbook and other changes that are being made with teacher evaluation this year.
So, let's see here. So last January, we began our review of the Teacher Evaluation Handbook and Talent Ed Perform, which is the electronic evaluation software where evaluations are input. In our discussion, we prioritized the evaluation process to enhance teaching and learning, and we reviewed the purpose of the Teaching Performance Evaluation Process and kept it at the forefront of the revision process. The Teacher Performance Process supports the continuous growth and development of each teacher by monitoring, analyzing, and applying pertinent evidence compiled within a system of meaningful feedback. It uses uniform performance standards to collect and present data to document performance-based on well-defined job expectations, and it defines a common purpose and expectation across Manassas City.
Manassas City Public Schools instituted the Division Teacher Evaluation Handbook in June 2012. Eleven years have passed. Since that time, VDE has made revisions to their teacher evaluation. We, as a division, have made changes to our instructional practices and wanted these changes to reflect best practices in teaching and learning. We wanted to have a handbook that was easy to read and understand, as well as being comprehensive of the evaluation process. It also needed to align with the Virginia Department of Education's expectations. We would like to publicly thank the individuals who made up the committee. There was representation across the division at all school levels, as well as central office personnel. While being part of the Teacher Evaluation Committee, Amy White also spearheaded the revision of the Teacher Performance Evaluation System Handbook. She used Dr. James Strong's VDE Teacher Approved Teacher Handbook and added MCPS language and instructional resources.
The revisions of the Teacher Performance Evaluation System Handbook includes more explanations and descriptions of data sources, for example, formal observations, walkthroughs, self-evaluation. A revised evaluation schedule includes identification of activities, tasks, documents, responsibilities, identification for teachers and administrators of identified tasks. A teacher evaluation key terminology was added to the handbook, which is helpful for new teachers to understand the evaluation process. It also includes the inclusion of supplemental performance indicators and supplemental sample artifacts for eleven non-grade level teachers was inserted into the handbook, for example, reading specialists, librarians. And lastly, a more thorough discussion of support plan and performance improvement plan was also included as part of the revisions.
As shared at the beginning of our presentation, the revisions didn't end with the handbook. We also wanted to simplify the evaluation process in Talent Ed Perform. We removed the forms from the process and added them as freestanding forms that will then be attached to each employee's Talent Ed Perform record. The evaluation process during mid-year and a summative evaluation will still occur in Talent Ed Perform.
And so, a large part, a piece of this is staff training. And so, to promote a common understanding of the evaluation process, the Office of Professional Learning will provide training to all school administrators and new and veteran. The training will also include a train-the-trainer model for principals to train their staff. Also, preparing slides and activities will be provided to school administrators and curriculum supervisors to ensure a consistent implementation of the evaluation process across the division to ensure that it is implemented with fidelity across all of our nine schools. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the board? Anyone? Ms. Brezcha?
Thank you for this. I want to commend you on putting together a very, I read the teacher handbook, I read the whole thing, or the TPS, the Teacher Performance Evaluation System Handbook. It was a well-written, professional document, and even though I saw that long list of acknowledgements, it's not easy to make a long list of authors look that good, so thank you for that. My questions have to do with, let's see. So we, so throughout the handbook, it mentioned, there are eight performance standards by which teachers are evaluated, and some of those dimensions receive greater weight than others. Can you talk me through how we came to our particular rating formula?
Sure. So during the committee, the school divisions have flexibility in how they weight standards. So, given that a most important, one of the most important standards we have here is our student academic progress of our students. And so, in talking with, and traditionally, the standard eight, which used to be standard seven, was weighted at a very high weighting. When it first came out, it was around forty percent. So traditionally, that standard is weighted higher. It can't be less than the other standards, and so during the committee, we talked a lot about that and what that should be. And so, based on feedback from the committee, we felt like it should be weighted higher than the other seven standards, but not so high that it could essentially be a detriment to the evaluation process. So, the standard eight is weighted at a sixteen percent weight, and each of the other seven standards is weighted at twelve percent.
Okay. And standard eight, just for everybody who did not read the whole handbook, that is student academic progress.
Correct.
So, teachers are expected to maintain, during, so teachers have a certain evaluation cycle. If you are a new teacher, you're evaluated every year for the first three years, and then after that point, you're only evaluated once, after, every, every three years after that. You don't get an evaluation every single year. Is that correct?
You don't have a formal evaluation every, if you've evaluated the first three years as a probationary teacher, once you reach continuing contract status, you are still evaluated every year, but not on a formal process until year three, when you're off the, when you're a continuing contract teacher. So, we did, we still do, we expect every teacher to be given feedback every year through formal or informal evaluations, regardless of where you are on the formal evaluation process.
Okay. So throughout, so when a teacher is being formally evaluated, they are expected to maintain a documentation log showing what they're, what they're, the quality of the work they're doing, the type of work they're doing, all that stuff. These documentation logs are available to administrators at any, at any point for inspection. How frequently does that, do those inspections actually end up happening?
So, it really depends on the situation. It depends on, on the teacher performance. If we have a teacher who is on a support plan or a school, an improvement plan, that documentation log is going to be looked at more frequently. It is required, the handbook requires that it is, it is looked at by the administrator with feedback for probationary teachers twice a year, once at the mid-year, once at the final. For other teachers who are not on a probationary status, it is evaluated during their summative evaluation, but it could happen at any point. And part of that is, the documentation log really is a list of artifacts and how they're documenting their meeting of standards, of course, according to the standards in the evaluation handbook. We look at a holistic approach. We don't want just one, one single thing to dictate a teacher's performance on a, on a particular standard.
Are these inspections of the documentation logs, are teachers notified, like, I'm going to look at, I want to see yours next Wednesday, or is it, I want to see yours right now? Are these surprise, or are these scheduled?
So, I'm sure Ms. Wingfield could speak to this, but we, she's in Human Resources, but what, when I was a principal and, and in the position now, supervising principals, what we preach is no surprises. There should not be any surprises for our teachers, or our administrators, anyone who's on a formal evaluation. There needs to be ongoing conversation, there needs to be expectations that are clearly defined, and so, you know, part of the training of our administrators in implementing this is that we need to know what is in that Teacher Evaluation System Handbook. Our teachers need to know it, our administrators need to know it, and they need to follow those things so that there is no surprises for our teachers.
One of the, as in part, as part of Performance Standard Eight, the student academic progress, one of the things that teachers are expected to do are to document the progress of each student throughout the school year. This is things like entering grades in a gradebook, but it's more than that. So can you talk a little bit more about what is embedded in that?
Sure. So when we talk about standard eight, we're talking about academic progress of our students. So, and really, that could look very different in different ways. We certainly have, you know, the more formal, traditional ways, quizzes, tests, those sorts of things, but really through other, other ways of assessing student learning, through anecdotal records, through portfolios, through conversations and dialogue with, with teachers and students, you know, documenting their strengths and weaknesses. So, it really goes beyond, you know, just as we look at the Teacher Evaluation Performance System in looking at evaluating how a teacher is doing, it is a holistic approach. We do the same thing with our students. You know, a student is not just a simple, a multiple choice test or a fill-in-the-blank. It's really multiple measures of progress, and, and teachers are expected to be able to document that, to be able to have conversations with parents, have conversations with each other, with each other and teams. We talked a lot last year about the targeted support block, where we have that time built into the schedule for our students to get remediation, to get enrichment. And so, if teachers are not aware of where students are performing and what their strengths and weaknesses are, it'd be very hard to implement that. So, we group students for that thirty minutes each day as targeted support, based on the documentation, the progress students are making.
Great. So, we had corresponded before the meeting about teacher absenteeism, and that goes to, I forget what number it is, but one of the standards is teacher professionalism. Can you just remind me what teacher professionalism includes?
So, it includes a variety of things, obviously, you know, coming prepared, being prepared to teach students each day, being part of a collaborative team, you know, how they're interacting with their, with their teammates, how they are, you know, meeting expectations around documenting student progress, really, anything that you would think of in, is that we want our teachers to be professional, we want them to be, making sure that they're fulfilling the responsibilities of their job description, you know, being, being on time, so really, a variety of things, being present, you know, there's a whole, a whole list of things that it would include.
But it's mostly behaviors. We do evaluate our teachers on their behavior.
Yes.
Yes. With regards to attendance, we do give our teachers a certain amount of paid leave and sick leave, but we do make it clear to folks when they're entering any kind of attendance danger zone, you know, like, there is this strange kind of tension where, yes, you can get, I don't know how much sick leave we offer, but yes, you can get this much sick leave, but at the same time, your attendance is calculated in terms of how you're being formally evaluated. So, I'm wondering how we strike that balance between offering this leave that we legally have to guarantee and offer, but also make sure that we have most teachers in most classrooms most days.
So, I think, you know, when we look at leave, we look at absenteeism, you know, there's not a one-size-fits-all approach. There's things that happen with our staff, and we need to be sensitive to that. There are unique circumstances that happen with our staff across the division, you know, family death, for example, sick child, illnesses, those are all things that need to be taken into account. But what we have, have communicated with our principals in, in looking at teacher absenteeism, absences, we have policy, school board policy that we follow, and we have talked with them about making sure that's implemented with fidelity. And it always should start off with a conversation, you know, what's, what's going on, you know, how can I help you? You know, and there, there have been times where it does become part of the teacher evaluation, and then there are times where those, those absences are legitimate. And so, it really depends on the situation, but it's not a one-size-fits-all approach.
Okay. That's all for me. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? All right. I'll ask then, are, are the evaluations, they're based on VDE requirements, is that correct? Okay. So, they would be similar to any other jurisdiction, but is our handbook different? Do, does everybody have their own handbook?
I don't know the answer.
Okay.
If everybody has their own handbook, but, you know, there are some variances that school division can take. Everything doesn't have to line up for the majority. We adopted most, you know, VDE's evaluation tool, but school divisions do have choice with some areas of the evaluation.
Okay. All right. There's no further questions. We thank you very much for your presentation. I'm sure the handbook will be very helpful, and thank you. All right. Next up on our agenda, regarding policies, a school board member, Mrs. Sarah Brezcha, has made a request to present a proposal regarding the grading policy. Ms. Brezcha?
Thank you very much, Chair Seberg. This is new territory for everybody. I will, I will admit, I'm a little nervous, so please, you know, bear with me as I go through this. Ms. Garza, can you pull up this slide presentation, please? I first want to commend all of our staff members who put together such beautiful PowerPoint presentations. I, in my own attempt to put together a PowerPoint presentation, have, you know, realized there's a lot of work into making them beautiful. I'm not a visual person, so this is going to be a very visually un-stimulating presentation. So for just a little bit of background, I first mentioned a variation of these proposals several meetings ago. Since then, other variations of these proposals have gone through both the Academic Committee and the Policy Committee, as we heard today through the committee reports, and based on the feedback from those committees, I am now making a full set of proposals to the full school board for the very first time. And I also, I'm going to speak in Spanish for just a second. Quiero decirte bien, voy a hablar en inglés, obviamente, pero mis propuestas están en Board Docs en español si ustedes necesitan. Este es una asignatura muy importante y quiero todo la comunidad verlo y entenderlo. My, these, this slide presentation is available on Board Docs in Spanish, if anybody wants to see them. So, I am bringing these proposals forward because first and foremost, I want what's best for our kids, all kids in Manassas City Schools. And I think a previous version of this governance team made a mistake with respect to these grading policies. We just had convocation, convocation where we learned about the crooked line to success and about how healthy it is for us to engage with any potential errors, and it's in this spirit that I'm offering these proposals as an opportunity for growth, or maybe not, maybe I'm wrong. To say the least, these proposals are controversial. I'd like to thank everybody who took time out of their evening to come speak to them today, on, you know, on both sides. I was very glad to see the robust and polite discussion that we got out of these proposals tonight. Grades strike at the heart of what it means to educate a child, and any discussion of how we assess our children deserves a robust process, and I'm hoping to kick that off now. So, I'm presenting these two proposals as drafts. I'm just one member of a governance team, and so I look forward to our discussion as this unfolds. Next slide, please. So I have two items that I'm proposing. They are related, but they are distinct. I will give this full presentation to allow all board members to have the full context, but they do not need to move together. We may decide to do one thing about one of them and something else about another one of them. And I designed these proposals to address three components of our grading policy that are the most problematic, you know, that we heard a lot about tonight, that the fact that our kids receive full credit for any assignments that they turn in up until the very last day of the quarter, that they are guaranteed reassessments for full credit, and that we have moved from a fifty to one-hundred percent, ten-point grade scale, instead of a zero to one-hundred percent more traditional grade scale. So my first proposal, I am proposing creating a temporary special committee on grading to convene over the twenty-three, twenty-four school year to conduct a comprehensive review of our grading policy for all three of these elements that I just mentioned, and make suggestions for our consideration for potential changes to the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. My second proposal, however, is to make one change just for this school year, because I believe this aspect is uniquely time-sensitive. I am proposing that we change our current late-work deadline component of the grading policy to track with the teaching unit, instead of extending out to the end of the entire quarter. I am making this proposal hopefully, hopefully for consideration for this school year, because we have kids graduating and getting ready to enter college this school year. We have kids getting ready to graduate and enter the workforce this school year. And a lot of those kids who are getting ready to enter that next step, who are in their last year of high school, they have not had the opportunity to operate under a system that encourages time management skills and, you know, management of deadlines and all that stuff. And it is a habit that needs to be reinforced. So I do think that the second proposal is important to tackle now. Next slide, please. So my first proposal, proposal one, proposing a temporary special committee on grading, a body representing various stakeholders with diverse viewpoints and backgrounds, teachers, administration, parents, students, you know, if we have any professionally qualified members of the public that we want to consider adding. I propose tasking them with collecting feedback on our current grading policy, seeing how people feel about those via surveys, open events, maybe even door not canvassing, researching the spectrum of grading policy options available. There's a lot of things happening in this space right now, not just in Virginia, but in the entire country. And then at the end of this process, present to us a menu of potential reforms with the associated trade-offs for our consideration in time for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And I do have, when the presentation is done, a draft motion that we can discuss. So, I'm proposing this process because processes like this is how you generate buy-in. You know, we just actually had a very good example with the, you know, Teacher Performance Evaluation Handbook. That was a pretty large committee, and it seems like they all did a lot of work, and it, that only impacts the teacher, so it made sense that that was a committee composed of, you know, teachers. I'm proposing this, I'm proposing a broader committee that goes out, more out into the general public, because I want to generate understanding and rectify what I think was an error in process two years ago. And, you know, I don't want to beat up on my fellow board members, you know, everybody, but I do have to share my critiques. The discussion of this item two years ago, it took five minutes. Only one board member asked a single question. The policy change itself was not posted on the public agenda, it was embedded in a larger presentation, return to learn. It was a single slide out of, you know, eleven other unrelated, that was slides that were unrelated to this policy change. So even if you were potentially interested in coming to the school board, hearing this discussion, offering your comments, you, the member of the public did not have that opportunity. And how you grade is a very crucial part of education. It's a core element of what makes an educational culture. It strikes to the heart of what kind of, you know, what kind of school, what our priorities are, who we're serving, you know, it is, it really, you know, passion on this subject is very natural. It is a very central part of the educational environment. And this is complex. I'm not doubting, yeah, I'm not disputing that at all. There are many available variations, and each element interacts with the other. So it is my goal, to, by proposing this process, that we generate a stable, sustainable, new policy that better serves our students and calms our community. You know, we had a teacher who wrote into us a few times, and at one point, a point was made that the grading policy is often not followed, and I think that this is a pretty good symptom, that we don't have the buy-in that we need to, whatever grading policy we're going to launch, needs a bigger, better, more robust process. And at the end of the day, we are a public institution, and we need to be responsive to our community. I want to say before I move on, I don't know what the end of this process is going to be. I mean, nobody does. I am proposing this process for its own sake, to see what, you know, good, qualified, motivated members of our community come up with, to see the discussion that that inspires in each of us. I don't know where it's going to go, but I think it's a necessary thing that we need to do in order to move forward as a community in this school system. And I also want to make clear, I'm not trying to outsource our decision-making. We are ultimately, the governance team, we ultimately decide. It's a mechanism for feedback, it's a mechanism for feedback, it's a mechanism for research, it's a mechanism for opening the dialogue. You know, I think everybody deserves a seat at this table as we discuss it. All right. Next slide, please. So moving on to proposal two, you will see my proposed policy language for proposal two in a moment, but essentially, I am proposing that we modify our current deadline policy, which says that work must be accepted up until the last day of the term for full credit, which is a nine-week period, and to tighten that up so it better tracks the coursework, I'll be proposing that work be turned in no later than the end of an instructional unit. And I do think it is important we tackle this now, since time management is a habit, and we do have kids entering the real world very soon, at the end of this school year, and I want to make sure that those kids are ready for what is waiting for them. So before we get there, I wanted to frame our discussion a little bit by putting two quotes, one from our, an MCPS policy document, and one from the Administrative Code of Virginia. "The school board of the city of Manassas is committed to providing equal opportunity for every student to achieve maximum intellectual, social, emotional, and physical growth, and to, and to ensuring that each student be equipped to communicate effectively with other people, to be competent both in the workplace and in higher education, and to feel confident of the ability to make creative and constructive decisions." From the Administrative Code of Virginia, "The mission of the public education system is to educate students in the essential knowledge and skills in order that they may be equipped for citizenship, work, and..." for citizenship, work, and an informed and successful life." And I think that these are wonderful goals that we should aim to support, you know, an informed and successful life. Informed gets at academic mastery, which we've talked so much about already, and, you know, successful life goes to soft skills, and you can't have an informed and successful life without both of those things, you know, for mastery in academics. Yes, it is very important for kids to engage with their coursework, definitely. I want them to master their academic concepts. And flexibility does have benefits, but only to a point. You know, research that I have done shows that it only, the flex, the benefits of flexibility only extend to the short term, and indeed, if the flexibility goes too much, that you start to see, that you stop seeing benefits. So, if you're too tight on deadlines, kids disengage, they don't do their work, they get discouraged. This is bad. We obviously want to avoid a system where we push you off a cliff. You know, you were sick that day, or your younger sibling was sick that day, too bad, you know, zero, disengaged, go, you know. We obviously want to avoid that. I want to avoid that. But if you extend the deadlines too much, then you give kids permission to procrastinate. You communicate that the work is not that important. You hurt the stu, you end up hurting the student engagement on the other end. I do think there is a sweet spot in deadline flexibility. I don't think that this current policy hits it. So, I, what the policy that I am prepared to offer is a flexible deadline policy. You know, the period of time we'd be looking at is more of a one to two-week period, instead of a nine-week period. And if you do not believe my individual research, you can see on the next slide what other divisions have done. Oh, not yet. Sorry, go back, just one. I do want to address a little bit the successful life component of these, of our goal documents here, which includes competency in work, competency in higher education. You can't do that without soft skills. And soft skills matter. You need time management, which is a habit that must be formed and reinforced. You need emotional competence. You need to be able to deal with stress. You need to be able to overcome whatever barriers you have to getting your work done. You know, our own CTE survey says that employees look for, look for this. The academic committee, we did receive a, the results of a CTE survey as part of our, the aviation academy presentation, showing that that's what employers were looking for the most. They weren't looking for technical skills, they were looking for time management and showing up to work on time and skills such as that. So, we need to design a system that supports students and supports the formation of good habits. You know, we are talking about children and young adults. They need our guidance, and they need our support. So, given this context, next slide, please, let's see what our other nearby divisions are doing. So, oh my, there's this small print, and I don't know which way is best to read it. But anyway, so, Manassas City, our current policy says, "Students will earn full credit for any assignment assessment, as long as it is completed and submitted to the teacher prior to the end of the quarter that it was assigned." And we can contrast this to Arlington County. "Late work submitted after the teacher's specified due date, but within the teaching unit, will be graded, but may be penalized up to 10 percent of the value of the assessment. Assessments not submitted prior to the end of the teaching unit may result in no credit or a zero." You know, Fairfax has something similar. Collaborative teams may choose to apply a penalty when work is turned in late. For major assignments and assessments, late work will be accepted with a maximum penalty of 10 percent if submitted within two weeks after the due date. Teams may also support, choose to support, to, choose to accept assignments beyond the minimum two weeks window, in accordance with a reasonable late work policy set by the school or team. Fairfax, of course, being a giant division, they give some site-based decision-making over to their buildings. It's also important to note, Fairfax is in the middle of a discussion about their grading policy, but it is not my, it is my understanding that the deadline component is not on the menu of the current debate that they're having, although someone can correct me if I'm wrong on that. Faukeer County, "Teachers will explain their grading methodology and, in their syllabi and within the division's learning management system." So, Faukeer basically says the teacher will set it, and the teacher's responsibility is to communicate it. I spoke with someone from Faukeer County, somebody in their central office, to see if they had a prevailing practice that wasn't written down, and they said, you know, generally, within one to two weeks, but they had no, and they thought the system worked well for them, they had no interest or appetite for exploring any longer time horizon than that. And in fact, they were a little surprised that, to learn that we were still doing full credit up to the end of the quarter. Loudoun County, sorry, these microphones are difficult to deal with. Loudoun County, "Reasonable and consistent guidelines for accepting late work must be set and communicated to students. Flexible deadlines may be required for submitting late work, and if you don't turn it in, you get a grade no lower than 50 percent." Manassas Park, they do not have a central policy. I was able to share in my notes to the policy committee that I had spoken to someone in their central office, and they said that their practice was generally one to two weeks. I had the opportunity, since the policy committee meeting, to speak with a Manassas Park High School teacher, and that teacher shared with me that, you know, oh, to be honest, yes, there is a lot of pressure on us to extend the deadlines if a student, you know, engages late in the term and wants to do the work, but that's because of Manassas Park, we have a zero. And they were confused. They were like, "Don't you guys have a 50? Like, isn't that what the 50 is for?" So that students can safely miss a deadline and still be able to catch up. You know, in Manassas Park, there's more pressure put on the teachers, because, you know, they have zeros in their system, and a zero can tank a grade very quickly. So, they were like, honestly, yes, you know, we do have some pressure to flex our deadlines, but mathematically, that system made sense to them, but didn't make sense to them in the context of us offering a 50 to 100 percent, 10-point grade scale. Prince William is in the middle of a complete overhaul of their grade system, so I won't spend too much time with them, but they also, you know, don't, as a matter of policy, go to the end of the term. Stafford County, this is getting hard for me to read, so I'm going to switch to my own computer. Stafford County, "Teachers have discretion in determining classroom makeup work deadlines prior to the summative assessment, and may assign penalties for late work that is not completed or turned in past the assigned due date." This is a new policy for Stafford, was a new policy for Stafford. They did have our policy, where work was being turned in for full credit up until the end of the quarter, and the person I spoke to in their central office shared with me that this was, he was quite animated, I wish I could have him here today, but he was very unequivocal, that it was a disaster for their students, a disaster for their teachers, and he was really encouraging us to take, or encouraging me to take a good, hard look on this, because, well, as I mentioned before, and as he mentioned to me, these are habits that need to be formed and reinforced. So, and he said also that this was very stressful on teachers, and it was very difficult. He said there were many anecdotes of students who had been good with their deadlines, you know, in eighth grade, in their sophomore, junior year, still struggling to get caught up into this more appropriate rhythm of submitting work on or close to the due date, just because that habit had been allowed to lapse. So, Manassas City is an outlier in this, in this specific component. You know, as I alluded to for proposal one, we have, there's many other, you know, elements to grading, how things are weighted, yada, 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 but when it comes to the deadlines, it's very clear that we are the outlier here. And even though I'm the one who's proposing the policy, and I'm the one who's obviously making the case here, I do, you know, challenge anybody who would like to keep this the same. I do think there needs to be specific discussion of why specifically our division, our kids in our divisions, our division is the, are the only kids who cannot be expected to do work on or close to the deadline. So, with that, click to the next slide, please. So, this is my draft of proposal two. It is a draft. Amendments, this is, you know, a colla, we are a collaborative team like any other. Amendments can be offered, this is just a starting point. I put this together as a compromise, informed by regional practices, which allows teachers to set deadlines at their discretion, and allows teachers to apply up to a 10 percent late penalty for assignments received after the due date but prior to the end of the teaching unit. You can see the policy language, that 10 percent penalty is not required, a teacher does not have to do that, if in their own pedagogy, they don't deem it to be necessary. And then, "任份数不被接受或提交前，未提交前的作业可能会导致一个评分 So, the current language, "Students earn, will earn full credit for any assignment assessment, as long as it is completed and submitted to the teacher prior to the end of the quarter that it was assigned." The proposed language would be, "Teachers have discretion in determining assignment due dates, which shall be clearly communicated to students. Late work submitted after the specified due date, but within the teaching unit, will be graded, but may be penalized up to 10 percent of the value of the assignment." Note the "may" there. I also opted not to use a "shall" there, because if teachers, you know, there's a trade-off there, because it allows teachers to exercise their judgment if they know a child, you know, is dealing with, you know, is dealing with something, but it results in a less standardized system overall, so that is something that we could potentially This policy, this draft policy proposal was most heavily inspired by the language of Arlington, Fairfax, and Stafford, and I believe falls well within the range of regional norms, and will inspire our kids to perform at similar levels to their regional peers. This proposal sets up a structure with a 10 percent consequence for turning in work late. However, it's a minimal penalty, it is not debilitating, it is an incentive, it is guidance to students that will inure them into forming successful habits. Additionally, setting the ultimate deadline at the end of the teaching unit, rather than the end of the quarter, incentivizes students to complete their work in better proximity to the instruction, which we should then see, you know, the resultant improvement in their mastery of their academic skills. For example, prior to taking your final test on exponents, it ultimately benefits a student if they do, if, to master concepts and to perform better on the exponent test itself, if they are able to practice and turn in their formative work, you know, on or before the day of the test. It will give both student and teacher better opportunities to monitor progress and remediate any gaps prior to moving on to other units. So, you know, the last slide is just my appendix of information that I found with that. I think probably the, what the policy committee did, and what maybe we should consider doing now, is the policy committee discussed proposal one first, and then discussed proposal two. So, I guess, let's discuss proposal one.
All right, since you put, since this is on the agenda for discussion, that is exactly what my intent is to do, is to discuss. We heard a lot of comments tonight, and I appreciate everybody, whether they're for any kind of change, or not for any kind of change, I appreciate everybody's input and dialogue tonight. It is extremely helpful. There, many, many DC area schools, not just Prince William County, are reexamining their grading policies, and I believe that's why this is being brought forward. I go back to this morning at convocation, "Do your part and I will do mine," which was stated by Jenny Dean, and I started to think about that. This school board has done an amazing job at, really, truly trying to support our speech, teach, I'm sorry, our students first. We have added instructional staff, educational coaches, school psychologists, school counselors. We're focusing on social, emotional learning. We have, we, that is definitely important, important aspect of what we have added in the past couple of years. We are focusing on professional development, and we have also committed to family liaisons to try and truly connect our schools, our students, with our families. We've spent a lot of money, a lot of resources, on making sure our students get the best opportunities available. CTE, the amount of money and effort our CT program has, has afforded our students, engaging our business partners, it's a lot of work and a lot of resources. Our fa, our students do have a lot of opportunity. I personally feel, I was going to, I really like the idea, what I'm seeing is perhaps the trend isn't, oh, let's just go to a 50 percent floor, let's just not have deadlines, kids don't have to turn anything all the way until the end of each quarter. Mrs. Brush's research has really, you did a lot of work to, to come up with this, how many school districts have many different ideas of the way they want to handle mastery of, each student needing to mastery of the material that, and the standards that they're being taught. I really like the idea of a special committee on our grading. We're unique, we are not like everybody else, but we do need to set some, we got, we have to have expectations, and I don't know, many teachers I've spoken to don't like the rushed deadline at the end. Just like one of the teachers said today, how are they supposed to really know, if you're waiting to the end of the quarter, if the student has any real, if they've gained any knowledge or mastered the, the material? I personally like that option, instead of just jumping into a decision, because we're unique. We have great kids. Many kids do need second chances, but we also have to hold them accountable as well. I wish we had our SOL results by this meeting. We will next meeting, will we not? That's my personal thought. I would like to hear from others.
Dr. Newman, did you have something you wanted to say?
No.
Yes. Yeah, of course.
I think, school board member Bressia, for this, we've had a lot of discussions about this topic, and I think we've learned from each other on it. I just have a couple of things that I want to address, and this is just one member of the governance team. The process taken to get the current policy is way deeper than a five-minute conversation during the board meeting. It doesn't move any closer.
Okay.
The, and I'm not saying that anyone said this today, but for anyone to think that we did not get input from teachers during this is not being fair to us, because we do listen to our teachers, and we treat them with respect. Every school had a team that was created to provide input. We also received input from a suit memo that we received from the DOE about best practices in grading that we used during that process. What was brought to us from those school committees and the central office committee was taken to the academic committee for discussion. It was also taken to the policy committee for discussion, because the regulation was attached to a policy. Then, it was a part of, just like we had today, of a presentation on how we were going to start the new school year. That meeting, it was still a regulation. The governance team, that day, made a discussion, a decision to switch it to policy, but it had already been discussed at the academic committee meeting, at the policy committee meeting. So, I don't want anyone to think that a big decision like grading was made in a five-minute To Ms. Williams' point of what a teacher said today during the, I don't know that teacher, she's not one of ours. She's not one of ours. Our policy was created by our teachers and our policy committee and our academic committee and that particular board. I don't make policy. I follow policy. I am interested in the discussion. I love to have discussions about what's best practices for kids, but I don't want anyone to think that we made a decision on grading in five minutes. So, that's mine.
Anybody else? Mrs. Stevens, did you want to ask your question?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. Thank you for calling on me. Can you hear me loud and clear?
Not loud and clear, but we can hear you.
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm trying to be as close as possible to my computer. Um, just a couple of things. The first was a clarification I'd like to make. I'm a teacher in Prince William County. Prince William County is not currently doing an overhaul of their grading policy. They're doing an audit to collect more data in order to have a robust conversation to decide whether or not an overhaul is needed. And in many instances, in the schools that I have taught in, in Prince William County, students do have until the end of the quarter to retake assignments and assessments because that's kind of my job, is working with students who need to bring their grades up and who need to take, retake assessments. So, it is something my students in my classroom and the students I work with are able to do until the end of the quarter. So, they are able to do that in Prince William County. And as far as looking at and thinking about the conversations we've had about the academic committee meeting and in the policy committee meeting, our request for Dr. Casada and Mr. Giffeller was to begin gathering some preliminary data to look at student performance and to figure out how we can compare student performance to grading. We have already started that process. Dr. Casada has already said that she can provide us preliminary information in October and that she will be able to share with us more information about what kind of deep dive she can do into our actual grading in Power School, which is the computer, which is the platform that grading is conducted in so we can actually look at what student performance looks like and how the grading policy is impacting student performance. Once we've had that information from Dr. Casada along with final information as far as SOLs, the predation, the WEDA testing, and everything that's calculated through the VDOE, we'll have more information so we can start to have a conversation about this. In addition, the policy committee made the recommendation that at the end of the first semester, instead of taking it back to the academic committee and back to the policy committee, we have a vote in front of the full board to decide whether or not to develop and convene a committee to look specifically at the grading policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Stevens. Anybody else?
Mrs. Spall? I just want to say that I am a little bit worried about a new trend where we're starting to operate from a cynically negative perspective. I, and I'm, I'm a little bit concerned that this feels like somewhat of a made-up problem. I am the mother of a, a child who graduated in 2015, and that child was regularly allowed to turn in, to turn assignments in late, regularly allowed to turn assignments in until the end of the quarter. This is a, this is a situation that is, I don't believe it's new to Manassas City Public Schools. I believe what we've done and the reason that we're an outlier on these policies is because we have taken a subjective problem and we've made it objective. We have, you know, made, we've, we've made sure that it's an equitable process. I'm not trying to say that there aren't any, there's no room for improvement, but I stand by the policy committee report.
Thank you, Mrs. Spall. Anybody else? Mr. Hollingsworth? Mrs. Brooks?
Thank you. Thank you for gathering the information. The, the school districts around us are all very different. We all have our different needs, our different sizes. So, I, I still do agree with our policy committee recommendation that we get, get the data that we're, you know, asking for. As far as the deadlines, there are deadlines in place, but there are many factors that can affect a student, health issues that take time to heal, where they're going to miss stuff, and, you know, if that happens and it's over the spread of the unit, you know, and students who are still acquiring the skills to master a unit and, you know, they need, they need time to be able to master that and then move on to Unit Two, so they need to be able to retake and learn. Students can be unsure of what Unit One means, and then something in Unit Two makes whatever that information in Unit One that wasn't clicking, make it click, you know. You, you have to ensure all the students' needs are being met, and punitive grading does not measure student learning. It doesn't increase student confidence or provide an environment of fairness or equity. Best practices should not deter students from feeling like they can succeed. We are here to ensure that our students succeed and master the content. They should learn skills that teach how to be a valuable asset in the work environment, but punitive grading does not do that. As a policy committee, we have set to, we want this data, we want to see what is actually happening in the classroom. We need more time, and it's, it's in haste to try and do that right now as the school year is starting because there's, the data's not here yet. So, we were, we have recommended that we come back at the end of the semester with our data and other meetings where we assess all of this in between that time. And that's all I have.
Thanks. Anybody else? All right, I'll just add a couple of things that haven't been said yet, although I agree with many of the comments. Obviously, we need to get more data. I can't imagine making a significant change like this without input and further review from our staff, our career educational professionals, teacher groups, and, and also guidance from VDOE. We have some guidance from VDOE, and that's why we had the changes in, previously. I do think that there's a lot of misinformation that has been put out there, and perhaps in a future policy committee or academic committee, we can go over and lay out the facts. I, I know there's due dates because I saw it in my report's Home and Schoologee that says, "This assignment is overdue." And it wasn't just one, but since Mr. Steinbach brought up my son and, and working through grades and keeping track, yes, the parents have to stay on top of it, but that information is available in Schoologee, I mean, to everybody, to the students, to the teachers, to the parents. So, it's a very useful tool. Maybe we need to do some more training on that so that parents can reinforce some of these things in their kids. I also just want to go on the record with saying, I'm okay being an outlier, and it's because it's coming from a point that we are doing what is right for students. And if I'm convinced that we are not doing what is right, then I'm open to change. Obviously, our policy, our grading policy needs some work, and I'm, I'm open to considering some changes, but I think that's going to be a process. I'm used to the process of going through committee work first, and I believe I support the recommendations coming out of the policy committee. Anyone else?
I've raised three kids in this school system. I've seen standards, and my last two kids were products of this school policy, I believe. I'm, I'm a believer with, when it comes to regulations and policies, that you can add to, but you can't take away. If, if you have academic standards of excellence, no one's lowering that standard for you. But I don't know, half of our school students or population, what they go through on, throughout the school year. Personally, I have housed a lot of kids who were destitute, a lot of kids who had real-life problems that prohibited them to be fully functioning students, okay? And with that being said, to be able to provide an opportunity to, for them to maintain pace with their peers is a benefit to this community. I've seen it in real time where kids who, most kids who can sit at a kitchen table and, with their two parents and can, can go over a school curriculum and, and, and get a grasp of the curriculum, excel. And I've also seen kids who are sleeping outside, who are worrying, walking the hallways, worrying about where they're going to get their next meal, and trying to figure out how they're going to pass the test on Tuesday. I find it disingenuous when people stand up and preach about hard work or real life who may not see real life or real work in that capacity. So, I don't care what the rest of the school districts around Manassas City are doing. If, if I'm so enamored with them, I'd move there, but I'm here in the city of Manassas, and I'm proud of my students, my kids, my community members that I live next door to. This is like Mayberry, you know? We all take care of each other. A gentleman spoke today about, "It takes a village." Well, come be a part of the village because it's here. I sat in convocation today, and I was very proud of the teacher's response in the, how inspired they were to embark on this school year, you know? And, and, and maybe I'm talking too much, and I apologize, but, but I do feel this, this is a made-up problem. I don't feel that it is something that demands this immediate attention the way it does, and I would like to lean on any more data and any more information that is provided by educators, career educators, and make a better educated decision.
Thank you, Mr. Hollingsworth. Ms. Bresch?
So, I'm, I'm happy to work with the, within the context of what the policy committee has recommended. I do think that, that does require us to discuss what exactly we are directing the superintendent and his, you know, assigned deputies to prepare. I am myself, and this is a question I can pose to my board members who are supportive of the, you know, more data. There was a specific, you know, data is only useful if it ultimately informs the decision. And there are some things that I'm contending about this that I think that would be a difficult time measuring. So, I guess my question is to Dr. Newman and anybody else who might be qualified to answer this question in the room, but, you know, I believe I heard it discussed at the policy committee meeting that we cannot actually track when assignments are submitted within Power School, correct?
That is correct. We do have staff talking to Power School to see if that's something that we can change in the system.
So, any contention that this increases student procrastination, we have no way to measure that.
Correct.
Okay. I mean, we also do not track what happens to our graduates when they leave, you know? We don't know how, how many jobs they take or, you know, take or lose between, you know, by, after they graduate high school until they're 30, whatever. That's not something that we track. Part of my concern and part of why I'm proposing these policies is because I'm concerned that whatever happens inside the school building, that it's not setting the kids up for success outside the school building. And it's easy to just keep your eyes inside the school building. So, are we able to track at all what happens outside the school building when the kids graduate?
How successful they are with their jobs?
With their jobs, with college, with the various soft skills that I have mentioned during the presentation.
I'm not understanding. You want, can, can we track if they have jobs and how many jobs they have?
I mean, I suspect the answer is no.
Right.
Yeah, the answer is no. The point I'm trying to make here is that, you know, who can, who can argue?
Yeah, let Ms. Bresch finish, and then Vice Chair, you can have the floor.
Sorry, that was a very strange auditory experience. So, you know, I'm, I think we do need to be specific about what we are hoping any kind of data collection would actually, what it would actually address. I mean, Ms. Stevens mentioned the WEDA scores, which is my understanding that is our ESOL screener, correct? And so, I don't understand how the results for our ESOL screeners would have anything to do with how our grading policies perform. My point is that I do think, you know, I'm happy to work within this context. I'm happy to, you know, design a motion in which we specifically direct the superintendent to prepare a certain set of reports for our consideration, but I'm a little skeptical that we can actually get, that there are a lot of dimensions that will go unmeasured.
Can't assignments be tracked through Schoologee? Submission of assignments in Schoologee? I have a teacher nodding yes. Hold tight, we're waiting on an answer.
I believe you can track them. I don't know that, that we can pull a report, though. I'd have to check on that, that piece, but I don't know the, the full answer to that.
Okay, thanks. Did you want to continue, or you don't?
Oh, well, we can let Ms. Stevens have the.
Vice Chair Stevens, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I'm sorry for the thing. I, I can't see anything on my screen. My screen is black, so I feel like a disembodied voice listening to other disembodied voices, so I, I don't get the visual cues of what's going on. We actually have a partnership with GIRA, which is a nonprofit funded through grants with the Department of Education that every student in our school division, starting at seventh grade, participates in. It's an automatic participation. Parents don't have to do anything to sign them up, but actually tracks our students till after graduation. I don't remember if it's one or two years after graduation. It's a new program that was, we just kind of enrolled in, I guess, if you could use that term, I believe, last year. So, it is something that, looking into the future, we can track how students are doing, where students are doing. In addition, students who have IAPs, they are tracked. It, it really depends upon the specific situation, but they are tracked after graduation. For example, two of my children who graduated from Manassas City Public Schools had IAPs, and the school division in the state were calling us two years after they had both graduated to check in, to see how they were doing, whether they were going to school, what kind of school they were going to, whether they were living at home, whether they had full-time, part-time positions. So, there is some data that is collected. GIRA is brand-new, so I'm not 100 percent sure what that data looks like, but that data can be made available, and that is data that's going to begin to be tracked.
Go ahead.
She's correct. The GIRA program is new. Well, we're already starting our third year. So, the first group of Manassas City students that are a part of the GIRA program are now in ninth grade. So, we didn't, we have not, we've not gotten to the point of tracking after school, they haven't graduated yet, but they're coming.
Mrs. Spall?
There's another. There's another governmental agency that's brand-new that we learned about in a VSBA training six months ago. Remember, they were, they were tracking where kids were going. It was a, it was at VSBA Central, right? There were no breakout sessions. We were both there, and they were tracking. I, I remember I came back and I told Chris Taylor about it because I can't remember the name of it, but I think there might be hope that, that we could track what, what's happening. And I don't want to speak out of turn, but there may be anecdotal things we could do through the Alumni Association.
Okay. Speaking as an alumni, well, of the association.
Yeah.
Is there any other discussion?
So, what specifically, I, the policy committee report, it went by very quickly, and there was a list of data on that.
Do you want to read it? I have the free.
You have, okay.
The first was to hold off on discussion of creating a special grading policy committee until the end. until the end of the first semester.
Chair Seberg, I was just asking about, there was like a list of data to be collected. So you don't have to read the whole thing.
Okay. I thought it was two.
Oh, okay. Well, whatever. Okay. Sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so gathering preliminary data including. Gathering preliminary data including grade distributions within and across departments, comparisons between grades and standardized assessment performance, and grades versus on-time graduation rates. Dr. Casada showed that once the school year starts, she will be able to take a deeper dive into Power School grading platform to identify and gather additional data which could shed light onto the efficacy of the current grading policy. She, along with Mr. Kefeller, will be able to share data gathered with the full board sometime in October. The committee also agreed that it would take, it would like to see the data PWCS will collect from their own grading policy audit, which is currently underway.
Uh, the SOL score results were not included in that. Should we consider adding the SOL test results?
That's inferred.
Yeah. Because I do think that the next step we should take is that a motion is put on to the Action Agenda Next Meeting, specifically directing what data we want collected and what report we'll see.
At the moment, this is still in the policy committee, so they, we would go back as a, as a policy committee and they would present this to us as we had requested at our committee meeting.
Well, the policy committee is, can only issue recommendations. It does not vote.
Correct.
And so only we can vote.
Cause we're not at a voting point yet.
Any two members can force a vote, just out of, uh, just as a point of clarification.
I, I'm aware.
I'm suggesting, I'm, I'm fine. I'm fine collecting this data. Like, I'm not arguing with that. I appreciate the work and the input of all of my board members. I am saying that what we, we should be specific as to what data we are collecting and what question we are hoping to answer. You know, Ms. Williams has mentioned the SOL tests a few times. So what question is that answering, you know, for you that we are collecting, you know, what are, what are the SOL test results going to tell us about the way we do our grades?
Well, the reason why I asked about SOLs, that we should be getting results next week is we talk about our focus being mastery and mastering the, the, we've got, we've got data from the young, the, our little kiddos. We, I think we test them like two or three times a year, the little ones. We've got the PALS results back. The older, our, our older population of students, eighth, eighth, what, third, third and up, the only data point we have as far as assessment goes, I mean, real measurable assessments are the SOLs. So that will tell me, and this is my, and if I'm wrong, please correct me, but if we are truly in this cycle, we shouldn't even need to have this conversation with the cycle that works. I think we wouldn't even need, need this conversation. But, um, if all the efforts and support we have put in place truly gets the majority of our kids to master the material and the standards that they're being taught, it will show in our SOL results. That's why, that's my purpose of, of asking about the SOLs, if we're going to get those results next week. I mean, next, next meeting.
Yeah, one of the things on the list was grade distribution. What question is being answered by a grade distribution? I mean, we did see a grade distribution at our retreat, which just told me that health class was a lot easier than math class, you know?
Vice Chair Stevens has a comment, sorry.
No, it's okay because she's going to comment what I was going to say.
Go ahead, Vice Chair.
Thanks. Um, so that list that was included in the report was not a complete list. Those were just some examples of some of the pieces of data that, um, we'll have access to. In addition, Dr. Casada said she needs to do a deeper dive into Power School to see what other information she can give us. So there may be additional pieces of information, additional pieces of data that we don't know are available because that's not our area of expertise. And, um, in addition, when I mentioned accreditation, accreditation includes SOL scores, SOL growth rates, WEDA scores, WEDA growth weights, rates. So when we're looking, when I talk about accreditation, that includes those SOL scores. That includes those WEDA scores, but it also has some more specific pieces of data, like looking at growth rates. And growth rates compare the prior year's SOL score to the current year's SOL score. So for example, K through eight, not K through eight, I'm sorry, K through eight, where they're taking SOLs, what the VDOE allows us to do is look at the SOL score for the prior year to the new year. And if a student has shown X amount of growth from one year to the next, that works in our favor and that shows that they're growing and that they've made expected growth, even if they haven't passed the SOL. So there are a lot of factors that work into it and I would be a little bit leery of putting forth very specific pieces of data for our governance team, for, um, central office to look for, because I don't think any of us know exactly what kind of pieces of data are available, what kind of pieces of data would be the best to look at. So for me, that would be something I'd say, well, we can recommend some things, but because we don't know everything that could be made available, we don't know all the tools that are in Power School, we don't know all the tools that are in Schoology. I don't want us to limit central office and what they can look for and what they can look at. But if we get a couple pieces of prelim, prelim, excuse me, preliminary data that can guide us in saying, hey, can you now look at X? Hey, can you now look at Y? Hey, can you now look at Z? Because we don't know what X, Y, and Z are going to look like until we have those preliminary pieces.
I've got two members that want to speak. Who wants to go first? Spall. Mrs. Spall.
I, I, I'm just trying to cut to the chase here. Would it, could it be appropriate that we ask Dr. Casada to give us a report next ti- meeting on what types of reports might be, I mean, she, a more, a more full-bodied explanation of what kinds of things are possible to be looked at?
Hold on that, Mrs. Brooks.
Starting with, with, uh, Ms. Stevens, um, to piggyback on what she was saying, we have to trust that our, you know, our staff, as she was saying, we, we don't know exactly what all they can find and what all each data point is. So we want them to go and do a preliminary deep dive to bring back to us what they find, present it to us, and then we can come back with, you know, okay, so let's look at this. Um, as far as to Ms. Spall's point, oh, and also I did want to add that we are also looking at, in addition to the, you know, grade, the grades, the, you know, the whole, you know, zero to a hundred versus fifty, et cetera, and deadlines, we're also talking about, um, I lost it. The, you know, pass fail option, the calculation of final grades and grade weighting. So those components are also included in what we've asked for them to do. So I think it's premature at this point in time to say, Dr. Casada, it's the beginning of school, um, you need to take your focus off getting the school year started and go do this other thing when it's already been said that this is something we can do in September-ish timeframe, hence the fact that they would, we would come back in October-ish time.
Can I ask, just a clarifying question on what do you want? What are you requesting that Dr. Casada do by the next meeting?
Give us a better idea of what it is that she's going to be looking at and only just what she's going to look at, not give us answers.
I don't know what, how long this takes.
I'm not sure either.
Can I, well, I don't want to put you on the spot either.
Yeah, great.
Can we discuss it and then I report back to the board?
That sounds great.
Absolutely. I, I'm on.
All right. Ms. Breschow, any finishing thoughts?
Um, so the point I'm, this is a, this is a proposal that is on the floor of the main body and there is only direction from the board to the superintendent when there is at least four members that vote for it. And I'm happy to include in any motion to direct the superintendent, you know, please prepare a report, a set of recommendations regarding our, you know, Ms. Breschow's two proposals that includes SOL, SOL growth weights. I'm not still convinced why we have WEDA on that list, but whatever, if she wants to, if anyone wants to see WEDA, grade distribution, competi-, you know, comparison between grades, grades versus on-time graduation rate, and any other relevant information, you know, judged to be relevant to this discussion. I just want to make sure we get this process done correctly. I do have, you know, professional experience with, you know, government process and rules of order and all this stuff, and that is what I think is the next thing to, to do, is that we vote on it and I can write a motion that goes on the Action Agenda Next Meeting.
Can I answer the, the WEDA question? I believe Vice Chair Stevens included the WEDA piece to it because that is a part of accreditation. What the federal pass rate is just, did the kid pass the test? The accreditation, did the kid make, did the kid pass the test? Did the kid make significant growth to be considered as a pass? Or if a student makes progress on the WEDA assessment, screeners, to see if they moved from a level, they are also counted in the accreditation as a, as a pass. So it is a part of the accreditation.
Right, I mean, I don't, I don't doubt that it's an important screener that is performed for a reason. I just don't see how it links to any question of the grade policy.
I was just speaking to WEDA.
Right.
Mr. Hollingsworth, do you have something you'd like to discuss?
It's, it's really cold up here. I just.
I sent you texts to tell him.
Yeah, so I, I'm saying that for the inflections in my voice, but, um, I'm just gonna, I just want to be honest. I have no appetite to, for this discussion. Um, I, I really think this is all semantics. Um, I, I've been committed to this community for a long time. Uh, so we saw grading showing the trend, they're trending up. I'm committed to, uh, uh, a cycle that works. Um, I, I, I don't know why we're doing this. I don't know where this is coming from, why this is an issue. Um, I'm ready to get a long-sleeved shirt and a jacket.
Can I ask the board, is there, um, anyone that would like to see this moved ahead to the Action Agenda for the next meeting?
Any member can submit anything for the Action Agenda for the next meeting.
From this conversation up here, it seems to me that we already are going down the route of putting together, I don't know if you want to call it a grading audit or committee on grading, we're already, it, we're already going down that route. Ms. Casada's going to, uh, begin collecting some data. So we're already, we're already there.
Yeah, we already, we actually already agree. I just think that we should do it in a formal process and not in a, oh, because a body with no voting power asked for it, you know, it should be done. Like, that's the only point that I'm trying to make. I agree, but, I agree. We are substantively in agreement. Last remaining disagreement is whether, or we, what kind of next process this entails, and that's what I think the next process, next process step should be.
Okay. I mean, I disagree.
Um. It is cold. Yeah, that's what I was, yeah, listen.
There is, my proposal is that next week, there is a motion that synthesizes everything we talked about here, basically the policy committee recommendations by, what was it? October? That we basically vote on the policy committee's recommendation to have the superintendent and his designees prepare what the policy committee has asked for. And that would, in addition to SOL scores, because I didn't think that was listed. And then that way there is a board action on it and not just a recommendation. It's for recommendations, but only we can make the decision. Well, the, we can direct. So this is not evaluating the proposals on the merits. It would be a vote to direct the superintendent to prepare the reports that the policy committee recommends.
Okay, I think we're done here today with this discussion. Is there anything left to discuss? All right, we're going to move on to board members' comments. Mrs. Brooks, you're first.
All right, thank you, Chair. Thank you to the school board and to our staff for, you know, being here tonight. Um, convocation this morning was amazing. I, I, you know, I think back to my time when I was teaching and going to convocations and just the euphoric feel you have when you're there with all of the teachers in all of the schools. And, um, so it's, it's, it's a really nice thing to, to get to experience from this side and, um, be part of, you know, representing all of the schools with our, you know, many colors. Um, talking about our shirts. Manassas City Public Schools are a wonderful asset to our community and we are building and our staff are building and we're moving forward and we are moving up. And I want to see that continue and I'm enjoying watching the process. And I hesitate to, um, move backwards or to do anything that might damage what we have done. And so I, I'm thankful that the central office is, you know, going to be, you know, getting the school year started, helping our teachers, supporting our teachers and, you know, and then diving into this process to, um, help us become even bigger and brighter and taking care of our kids, because that's all of our kids is, all of our students are who we're here for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brooks. Mr. Hollingsworth, you have comments tonight?
Uh, Ms. Brooks, uh, I, I guess I'm going to piggyback off what you just stated. Um, my oldest son came to Osborne around 2015, I believe. Don't hold, don't hold me to that. But, um, uh, what I saw today was immense growth from what I saw in 2017, 15. Um, you know, I was always taught to look for the good stuff and the good stuff is what I saw today, although they even talked me into wearing a tie dye T-shirt. To see the, the enthusiasm from the faculty, to see, uh, the, the students in the video, uh, just puts a, uh, just puts a bow on the effort that we, that we put forth as a, as a governance team and as a community. And I just wanted, I just want to make it clear, um, when we talk about community, I want to make sure we're talking about the whole community. Just because a handful of people come here with some comments, they're not speaking for the whole community. And I, I just want to make sure we keep that perspective open, uh, because I think some, I think we're straying away from, from what our real intentions are. And those are our kids, not Loudon's kids, not Fairfax County kids, Manassas City kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hollingsworth. Mrs. Breschow.
I would like to do a shout out to convocation, although maybe hoodies next time because these air-conditioned spaces. Um, and I would like to assure Mr. Hollingsworth that he looks great in tie dye. Um, so it was a delight and it was a real pleasure to be a part of that for the very first time and thank you to everybody who, you know, planned that obviously very carefully. This weekend I was also able to participate in the Salvador Festiv-, the Salvador Day Festival hosted by CoSalva, and that was a really, um, that was a really remarkable experience. I got a chance to really speak with our, you know, a lot of our families and learn some of what worries them, what concerns them, and what they are happy about and what they like. And that was, you know, that was really special and I really enjoyed being able to. And that was, you know, that was really special, and I really enjoyed being out there and listening to the music. You know, that was, so thank you to CoSalva for such a wonderful event. And I would like to thank my board members. I know today was, you know, I can finally evict these butterflies that have been living in my stomach, you know, for the past few weeks. I know that this has not been an easy process, but I am proud of us. I'm proud of Manassas City. I'm proud of the polite, productive comments that we received here this evening. I am proud of the discussion that we're having here, even though it is, doesn't fit onto a usual template of what we're used to. And so those are all my comments I have for tonight. Go, Manassas City.
Thank you, Mrs. Breja. Mrs. Williams.
Yes, Convocation was amazing, as always, as it always is. It is always exciting to see all the camaraderie of every single staff member, from the janitors to the bus drivers. Everybody was there, it was fantastic. And I appreciate the tough conversation this afternoon, actually this evening now, and I think the Policy Committee needs to continue their work. I, I want to remind everybody that we, we, the regulation was changed during COVID. COVID was an extremely tough time. We're out of COVID now, and I'm really looking forward to see what the results are of the data and make decisions from there. And most importantly, I want to welcome all of our students back on the 16th. It'll be exciting to see all those smiling faces in the buildings again. Thank you very much, and you guys have a great night.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mrs. Spall.
I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about Convocation. Our, our community, when I was a kid here, there was so little to do. I feel like there's so many things that is, that are available to our families and our kids. African-American Festival this weekend was great. We have the Resource Fair coming up. You know, we have a really full year to look forward to. We have a lot of people that are working really hard to make sure that our kids are engaged at every level. And so I just wish that we, you know, could exude the pride that, that this community deserves more often, regularly, all the time.
Thank you, Mrs. Spall. Vice Chair Stevens is waiving her comments this evening, but I'd like to ask Dr. Newman if you have any comments to share?
Yes, I normally don't talk during comment time, but I think it's important to remember the message from Convocation, and that is, but why? Why are we here? We're here for our kids. I respect and love every member of our governance team. I respect your opinions, thoughts, how we can move forward. You know, this is a difficult conversation, and as long as we're having it out of a place of respect, in a place of genuine conversation, I think we can walk away even from difficult conversations, knowing that we're doing what's right by kids. I may not get my way, and not everyone here may get their way, but as a governance team, we have the responsibility to have conversations respectfully and to do what's right by kids. And let's refocus on our why, just like we talked about during Convocation today. That's my comment.
Thank you, Dr. Newman. And I'll just close out with a couple announcements. I did want to thank everybody that came out to our City Book Club on July 29th at the Manassas City Library, where we discussed "A Forever Family" by Rob Shear. Thank you to Nicole Curvin, who's the Department of Social Services Director, Councilman Ralph Smith, my fellow school board member Jill Spall, and several members of our MCPS family, including Madisala Murray, who is here, and also Dr., oh, no, she's not here. Dr. Colwell was not here, but she's, she was there, and Mr. Emel. So also, comments about Convocation, very inspiring. I hope everybody gets a chance to see the video, the 30-minute video, that I'm sure will be posted at some point, and watch it on repeat. And then Saturday, August 12th, that's this Saturday, from 8:00 to noon, is the MCPS Community Wellness and Resource Fair. Everyone is invited. There'll be all kinds of resources for our families there and students. So come on out. Anything else? Can I get a motion for closed session?
Chair, I move that the school board of the City of Manassas enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended for the following purposes. 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 1, Discussion of Personnel Matter, PERS 2324-0094.
Second. I have a motion by Mrs. Brooks, seconded by Mrs. Williams, that the school board of the City of Manassas enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended for the following purposes. 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 1, Discussion of Personnel Matter, PERS 2324-0094. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh. Yes, ma'am? Yes. When we make the motion, I think it'll be covered. Yeah. You'll abstain. Is that good? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Did she say aye? Oh. Enter a closed session. Yeah. So she's not going to participate in that vote? Okay. Six, zero, with Vice Chair Stevens abstaining from the vote. All right, here we go.